Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack National Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Great. Good evening. Welcome to the March 30th, 2021 special meeting of the Merrimack School Board. Please join me. To all of you that are on Zoom, please remember to take your microphones off mute and rise to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic, the which is stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is regarding the guidelines for public participation. Because we are remote, we can't take live testimony. So if anyone wants to send any public comments, please send them in the following way. Please send an email to publiccomments@sa26.org. Again, that email address is publiccomments@sa26.org. We do require your name and address for the record on such documentation. Based on the amount of information that we received tonight, our goal is to always read off verbatim the comments as we receive them. If the comments did come too heavy in volume, we would just have to not read the public comment into testimony. It's really an all-or-nothing proposition. Regardless, we will put all public comments in our minutes for tonight's meeting, but we would just not be able to read them tonight if we can't read all of them. Up until just recently, I would say a few months back, it had never happened, and it had only happened just that one time. I'd just like to be sure to address this upfront in case we find ourselves in that position. So Shannon, turning it over to item number three, public participation. Do we have any? I did see some, so I know we have public participation.
I also wanted to have a point of order on your comment, and that the email is publiccomment without an s@sa26.org. So it's publiccomment@sa26.org, not plural.
Okay, thank you.
I double-checked with our Outlook.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much for that.
You're very welcome. So we want to make sure we get the feedback. So thank you. So the first came over the weekend from Catherine Hodge, 44 Belmont Drive. "Good evening. As much as I would love for the students to return to the high school full-time, five days a week, I think any more disruption will only further negatively affect the students. Most students are set to routine, and they are comfortable with, and the parents are comfortable with. With only approximately three months left in the school year, I think at this time it would be detrimental to once again disrupt these routines. While I think we should have been back in school full-time a long time ago, at this point, I do not see any benefit." Thank you, Catherine Hodge. Earlier today, we received four emails, actually three emails and one that came as we started our meeting. So this is from Carrie Hayes at 16 Four Seasons Lane. "Good evening. First and foremost, I'd like to thank all of you greatly for your efforts through a very difficult time. I've heard that schools will reopen fully when it is safe for staff and students to do so. However, I would also argue that schools partially open is not a safe mental environment for many children. We are now in a different wave, an escalating mental and behavioral health crisis. I have spoken with many parents in (in) town and surrounding areas (through this) who have shared very difficult stories. Stories of children who had never struggled academically, who are now failing and disengaged, who are on months-long waiting lists for therapists, who now have behavioral disorders that have surfaced or have been exacerbated through COVID, who have experienced weight loss and gain due to stress, more children who are cutting, who went to the ER with suicidal thoughts to seek help, who were kept in a hallway for days on end until a bed opened up at a mental health facility. Parents have contemplated whether taking their child to the ER was the right decision, given the lack of mental health resources available, which added further trauma to the experience. I cannot bear to hear these stories. I am sure you cannot either. A transition back to school as soon as possible is not the fix-all for this worsening crisis, but it will help alleviate some of this over time. I am sure we all agree most students need their in-school routine to effectively learn, and the support of their teachers, trusted counselors, support staff, and friends. This wave I speak of, we feel, is much more concerning and impacts many more than COVID does at this time. CDC guidelines have been updated, and many schools have been open/reopened full-time successfully. Let's learn from other districts who have gone before us. It's time to go back for those who choose to do so. What are the hurdles to overcome in the plans for each school to offer not only remote and hybrid, but four to five days in school for quarter four?" "Given JMU's follows the elementary model, they should be able to transition back full-time now. Time is of the essence. It is a helpless feeling when you feel you cannot provide the support your child needs. We promised our boys we would speak up and advocate for change. I appreciate your time, Carrie Hayes." Next comes from Gina Rosati of 15 Dunbarton Drive. "Dear Merrimack School Board, with the upcoming election approaching and some changing of the school board possible, I want to thank the current school board for safely navigating this storm of COVID-19. As a nation, we have not had a health crisis of this magnitude for over a century. The Merrimack School Board was faced with conflicting information coming from the federal government, many opinions on which direction to take, and no easy answers. As a parent of two Merrimack graduates and a longtime Merrimack school volunteer, I know many of the teachers in the Merrimack school system. I've been very concerned for their health, especially those who are 50-plus in age and/or have pre-existing conditions. There are people who will tell you that scientific data shows limited spread of COVID-19 within schools, and that it's safe to hold classes in person, but I believe that while we will never know if we've been too safe, we will certainly know if we haven't been safe enough. As I write this, 550,165 people are reported dead by Johns Hopkins due to COVID-19. That tells me that the United States as a nation has not been safe enough. This article by Education Week states that as of March 23rd, 2021, at least 906 active and retired K-12 educators and personnel have died of COVID-19. Of those, 252 are active teachers." And there's a link to edweek.org/teaching-learning/educators-we've-lost-with-the-coronavirus/2020/04. The good news is that in Merrimack, no teachers or school staff have died of COVID-19, and vaccines are now available to all teachers and school staff. Merrimack has seen over 1,600 cases of COVID-19, but I believe that the hard decisions of the Merrimack School Board Administration made to go remote when necessary has saved lives. Thank you, Gina Rosati. Next, we're on to Sarah Leland of 149 Natticoop Road. "To the Merrimack School Board, as a parent of two students at MHS, I urge you to keep the hybrid model as it is until the end of the school year. The students have had enough change this year, and while it is far from ideal, staying with the hybrid model is what they are used to. The district administration has been unprepared this entire school year for any pivoting to fully remote or fully in-person, and it is highly unlikely that they will be able to put together a viable plan for returning students to all-in, four- or five-day-a-week instructional model by the start of the fourth quarter. A change will create many scheduling issues that would take weeks to iron out disrupting any actual teaching or learning that would happen by maintaining the current hybrid model. The final quarter is nine weeks. There aren't two to three or more weeks to work out the kinks in a new instructional model. In addition, bringing all students back would create a revolving door of quarantining for classes and grades. There isn't enough room to bring back all the students whose parents want them back and maintain even three feet of physical distancing. There have also been many positive COVID-19 cases in the last week in the high school alone. Adding more people for more days will only compound the problem. Furthermore, teachers are exhausted and worn out. They are frustrated and feeling hopeless and unappreciated. They have been asked throughout this year to implement a different instructional model in each of the three quarters so far. They have had to manage multiple technology platforms and devices with no warning of the change, no preparation time and inadequate training. They do not need the additional burden of a new schedule, new classes, or more potential exposure to COVID. I ask that you keep the hybrid model as it is. Students and teachers are worn out, and another change, a change that will only last one quarter and has the high potential for sending whole schools to fully remote as COVID cases multiply, is not in their best interest. Thank you for your consideration, Sarah Leland." And then finally, Melani Dumont for LE Drive. "Dear School Board Members, I would like to take the opportunity during this meeting to plead with you all to make immediate change to the current high school hybrid model. My son, like many other students, is struggling with the current teaching model. Without disclosing deeply personal information, I can't stress enough how much he is overwhelmed with the numerous applications required to get through his work every week. I cannot put in towards the loneliness he faces three days of the school week. Please remember that these are kids, not adults in the working world. They are not college students. They may be able to maneuver numerous games in every social media platform there is, but they are not business people. Canvas, as we were told, was the one, all, and all solution. Although it could be, it is far from it because the teachers do not use the platform consistently from one class to the next. There are applications used within applications. My child has six classes, and it's like he has six different jobs. I question how many of the board members, school administration, and teachers have done trial runs on these systems from a student perspective. In January, before the close of second quarter, I sent a very detailed email including attached screenshots and use cases on what my child experiences from one class to another. I ask that they instruct the teachers to use the Canvas platform the same way to alleviate the unnecessary stresses causing justifying things within the system. It took nearly a month to get an acknowledgement from the school. No action was taken, and I am deeply disappointed. The email is heavily relied upon, and it was pushed upon our students without guidance and proper training. The amount of non-relevant emails received from the school on top of the emails from his teachers is staggering for a high schooler. It's like a full-time job. Using email efficiently requires the time to learn in specific organizational skills, a skill that teenagers lack per the executive skills webinar you offered a couple of weeks ago. Additionally, the various models used to get and submit assignments are not 100% reliable. Emails to my son's sandbox are not found on the teacher's end. Assignments that I witnessed my son doing are received as blank. In the Kami system, I personally researched this problem out and found articles from other districts that experienced the same issue." "My son is still not getting grades, and the assignment status is back at a reasonable time for all classes. Up until last week, one class has not posted grades in Power School or is a Canvas since March 5th. We are nearing the end of this quarter, and we've not only had grades and assignment statuses posted into the first two weeks of the start of the quarter. In a few incidences, teachers have mistakenly marking wrong as missing because grades and updates are behind. We don't realize until up to two weeks later. Let me be clear, I've repeatedly asked my son if the work is too hard, and he tells me no. I've repeatedly asked if the number of assignments is too high, and he told me no. He tells me he feels alone. He feels he is left to figure this out on his own, the three days he is home every week. He tells me how difficult it is using the school's tools. He is withdrawing further and further. I'm expressing our issues that are not unique to other students. It takes tremendous amount of time after class to search for additional classwork to be done remotely, upcoming assignments, track submitted or missing assignments, check for announcements/notifications on Canvas, read through emails, and troubleshoot issues with the technology. I've personally taken on the role to try and manage this. It is affecting my job and other family responsibilities. I have a degree in software development. I work for a technology company, and I spend an insane amount of time with this. My son is so overwhelmed and stressed out before he even starts assignments. It is no wonder his effort on schoolwork is minimal. I am pleading again with the school and now the school board to make change. Our kids need to be in school communicating face-to-face with teachers. They need to physically be connected to schoolwork. They need to be around other students. They need to hear commotion of school hallways. They need the chatter and the laughter. They are sitting home with a system that is not suited for any child. I realize there is an excessive amount of pressure placed on the teachers. I know they are overwhelmed. However, something needs to change. Respectfully, Melani Dumont." And let me just double-check. And I believe that covers all so far this evening.
Thank you, Shannon.
You're welcome.
Item number four, which is the updated proposal for in-person learning in grades five through 12. I'd like to turn it over to our Superintendent Dr. Mark McLaughlin to introduce this team.
Thank you. So before I start, I'd like to introduce the folks who are with us tonight, because the plan that we are proposing to the board has been developed in concert with everybody that you see on the screen. So I think it's important that the board and the community listening know who contributed to this plan. So I'm going to call a school, and I would just ask the principal to introduce him or herself, and then the assistant principal and the nurse from that building if we could. So I'm going to start with the upper elementary school.
Good evening. I'm Marsha McGill, the principal of the upper elementary school, and with me this evening, there's Dr. Nicole Rowe, our assistant principal, and Joanne Talbot, our school nurse.
Thank you. The middle school.
Good evening. I'm Adam Carragher. I am the principal of Merrimack Middle School. With us tonight is Shawna Demore, the assistant principal of Merrimack Middle School, and Stephanie Davenport, our school nurse.
Thank you. And the high school.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sharon Putney, principal of the high school. And with us tonight are Rich Zampieri, assistant principal, Pete Bergeron, assistant principal. We have two nurses with us, Karen Hamis and Patty Schwinnard.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Also, a few other people are a little bit more familiar to you, but Nancy Rose, just say hello. Nancy is the Director of Library Media Technology Laboratory Media. Always get that a little messed up. Also, I want to introduce Bill Morris, the Coordinator of the Remote Education Academy for Learning, Heather Barker, our Student Services Director, and Melissa Gagny, our Human Resources Manager. Think I have everybody. So it's important that you know that the plan that we are putting forth in front of you was developed by all these people. So I will just, I wonder if we can get the PowerPoint up, John? Thank you. So you can go to the next slide. So just want to spend a minute talking about how this plan was developed. The components that we considered were choice, design, and safety. I just want to say a little bit about all three before I have our other folks speak. Back in the fall, we presented a need to go remote between the Thanksgiving break and after the New Year. And at that time, the board said to us that they wanted a different, more robust plan for instruction in the second semester. So we worked on that over the Christmas break and through January. I think it was Board Member Schneider who had mentioned that one of the things that we could look into would be the Owl Camera. Ours is a little different. It's called the VDO360. But in any event, the Owl Camera, which would be a tool that would allow us to achieve two goals. One goal would be to increase contact time between students and teachers. So rather than two days a week and two days doing extended learning, which was our plan in the fall, to increase contact time to four days per week at a minimum. And then it also allowed us to maintain the safety that we're required to maintain as the custodians of our schools. So we went with that and then leveraged a substantial amount of grant money to purchase that tool, which allowed us to engage in concurrent learning for five through 12. Our original plan that the board saw some time ago was to bring back elementary students K to four because we felt that we could offer full-time option for parents and families and maintain safety. We did that by literally walking each classroom, measuring the classroom, and understanding if we had a full contingent of students, whether we could maintain the guidance of six feet or at least three feet. And we wouldn't have come to the board with that recommendation if we couldn't have done that. And we realized we could. I've said before, and I'll say again, it is very, very tight, and on any given day, we're close in some classes. But we said that all along that that was the case. In any event, what we said all along was that we couldn't make that same guarantee for five through 12. And that's why we didn't include five through 12 in the original plan. We instead relied on the concurrent learning model. In any event, the board more recently has suggested that they would like us to pivot to a different, potentially to a different model that includes a return to school. So the reason I focus on choice is because choice tonight is made possible by our original investment in the tools that serve concurrent learning. So the choices that you'll hear about tonight that we're offering are made possible by that earlier decision by the district. Just want to say something briefly about design. The team has gotten together for weeks now and have talked specifically about the design of the proposal, bearing in mind our two chief responsibilities, which is the delivery of education and the maintenance of safety for students and staff. We've never wavered from that. And the design of this very much speaks to that goal still. And then, of course, the other component is safety. We have never wavered from our goal to provide safety as much as we can for students and staff. That's something I think we should all be proud of, that we have worked very hard to maintain. And the fact that we have limited significantly the outbreaks that have happened in other districts around the state, I think is a function of the choices that we've made. So that's our plan. It focuses on those three things, and I'm just going to move it right along to John Fabrizio to provide a little bit more detail about the choice component.
Thank you, Mark. I want to talk about choice a little bit here. And so our plan is, in a lot of ways, very simplistic, because it really does focus on what Mark said. It focuses on things we're already doing and things we'll move towards the future. So the simple choice is, parents and students make a choice to attend school in person or online. All right? This will happen five days a week. We'll have our schools open. Concurrent learning will stay in place for this to happen. So a little more, just to elaborate. On a typical Monday, our Cohort A would come to school, and we would have half the students there. Well, what we're proposing here is the doors are open to Cohort B also on Mondays. And is the choice, knowing that, what you'll hear in this thing, there are many factors that come in place. One of them is spacing. We are not going to be able to maintain the required spacing or the recommended spacing. So therefore, knowing the environment going into, we'll have some spacing concerns. We are leaving it as a choice with the parents to have students come in live to school in person. They'll always have the option for concurrent learning and working from home, and that is available through our plan. So again, I'll say it one more time, five days a week, the doors will be open. Fridays, we'll continue to meet students' needs, and I'll talk a little bit about that more in the next slide. But it'll be five days a week, and that students will have the choice to either be online or in person, along with their parents to make that choice.
So John, I'm just going to add a little color commentary here, just so that we're completely clear about what we're talking about. So thank you, John. In the current model that we have in place, students are in Cohort A and Cohort B. But that's merely for physical distancing. So two days a week, students are in school right now, and two days a week, students are home. But four days a week, they're all part of the same class, and then they alternate. So students in Cohort A are in school two days, and then they're remote two days, and then on the second two days of the week, it flips. So what we're saying now, the chief difference, is that regardless of whether you're in Cohort A or Cohort B, we are saying that you can come to school five days a week if you wish to, and you could make that choice on a daily basis. You can imagine that that represents some challenges in terms of record-keeping, but we have taken that into account, and we have got that figured out. So we are making the most important thing to get here tonight, is the choice we're offering, is to come into school five days a week if you like, to come in and to maintain your Cohort A/Cohort B separation, or to do some combination of that on any given day. So that's the primary focus of the plan, and that is the choice that I was alluding to earlier, primarily made possible by the tools that allow us to do concurrent learning.
Thank you, Mark, for the clarification. Also, the REAL program, many questions came around the REAL program and what would happen if my student was already have a remote schedule and part of that program. That will remain intact as it is, and that will be where we are currently. As it's in place now, if parents were to change from being part of the REAL program and remote to changing to come back full-time, there is a process still on our websites that they would fill out the form, and that's what would have to happen if they want to make that change. Design. Mr. Chauvin, would you like to talk a little bit about the buses at this point?
Are you on mute, Matt?
I don't see Matt. Is he on the screen? All right, John, why don't you?
Well, Matt just went off, so I'll continue, and then Matt can join us after. Matt just sent me a message saying he'd lost his internet, but he'll join us as soon as he can. So I apologize for that. So buses will have their normal routes. So for this to happen, and we have to have this ability where parents have the choice, we're going to have to run our normal bus schedule. So we will have our buses running throughout town as they would if we were back full-time. That's going to be happening. Lunches will be served. Hot lunches will still happen in our normal lunch menu, but we will have a grab-and-go option for each school. This will allow students to not have to stay in line longer, to try to, again, create spacing. You will hear that word a lot. We are doing our best to try to create spacing, and in this situation, if we can have grab-and-go, it moves kids through the lines faster. So it will be an option for students. Fridays, we'll continue to focus on what students' needs. We have transitioned a lot this year, and this is yet another transition. And we have students who have a lot of needs, and that we are trying to meet those needs. And we have students that also have a need to offer the extensions, and we want to make sure we're meeting those needs too. So Fridays will be a win day, and it's what you need, and we will focus on making sure that happens. So again, four days of direct instruction, the fifth day is a win day, and students will be early released, K through 12. The whole entire district will be released early, K through 12, on Fridays. I want to make sure we're clear on that, because that will still allow us to do a lot of this planning that we need to do, and a lot of our PLTs and department heads still need to take place, and that will happen on Friday afternoons.
So John, I want to just pause here, because this is important. You know, we hear a lot of folks talk about the academic and emotional needs of our students. Nobody has to tell us that. We live it every day, and we understand it completely. And so what we are trying to do by building in the what individuals need component on Friday is to provide that opportunity for some level of remediation, some level of counseling, whatever a student needs. Our staff will be in the buildings, and students have access to school on those days. So there's an argument to be made for direct instruction every day, but under these circumstances that are not ideal for any student in any school in the United States, it seems to us that it would be very helpful to have students be able to have some time to work with their teachers around issues of concern for them, so that they can get caught up, stay on track educationally. That's been our goal all along, and it is connected to a larger goal that Merrimack has had in place for a long time. It is connected to a larger goal that Merrimack has had in place for a long time, which is uh, under universal design. Is trying to understand the individual needs of students and accommodate our curriculum and instruction to those needs. So in a way, it both supports uh, what we are trying to do for students in this COVID time. And it also is an extension of a larger goal that we've been about for some time relative to universal design initiative. Thanks, John.
Thank you, Mark. And then also, um, you know, with the work of, um. You know, Nancy Rosen, her team will be adding some wifi, will be added to outdoor spaces. We've already added some outdoor spots, um. Wifi spots, we'll add additional ones as we need, so students will have access and we can get. With the good weather and, and once we get into May, there's better weather, we'll utilize our outdoor space to keep our spacing with students. Safety, um. So proposing i- in current safety measures, um, without social distancing. If we bring, when we bring kids back, there'll be less social distancing. And it's important that we know with our students that we are still keeping in safety mitigating measures that we've had all along. And adding some additional ones. So assigned seats in the buses, that will definitely happen for all buses. And that's important, so we can do both contact tracing and certainly uh, do our best to spread children out when possible. Classrooms, no mask breaks. We're going to eliminate mask breaks inside. Um, that will happen. There's a lot, um, a, a lot to happen where we're, we're going to be in tight spaces. Uh, less than three feet. We wanna make sure that students keep their masks on at all times in the buildings. Assigned seats in the classroom. Or again, for possible uh, contact tracing and knowing what's gonna happen as we increase sizes. We need to also know where students are sitting and assign them to their se- their seats. Increase plexiglass where needed. We have to make sure that um, in areas such as science labs and tables, we're going to increase some plexiglass. Current safety measures stay in place. We'll continue to have a large supply of sanitizer. We'll continue to have our portable sinks. We will continue to have our stand-up stations. We will continue to have nighttime mitigations such as cleaning and fogging where necessary. So, and again, additionally, this is an addition that we have, um, we are in the process of securing. Tents for each of the three locations that allow us to use these outdoor spaces and outdoor areas. Uh, for many purposes that I'll explain a little more in a little bit. Transportation. Um, I'll keep going until Mr. Chevino rejoins us.
Oh, I've been, I've been back for a while, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chevino. Why don't you start about transportation? Thank you, I didn't realize.
You, you were doing so great, it's like, why, why, why am I even bothering to show up this evening? So, transportation, uh, STA and caring hands, they'll still disinfect uh, before and after every route. Uh, the buses will be disinfected before the first tier, middle school, high school. And again, after they uh, run the second tier. They're in the process, K through four, they're in the, they're assigning seats to kids for better contract. Contact tracing and five and six, uh, they're looking at doing that currently right now. So we're looking to probably do that with all students. However. That being said, there are still going to be some issues depending upon the amount of ridership we have. We've probably seen an increase in parents driving their own students, which has kept the bus spacing reasonable. But there may be incidences where. That is not at all possible depending upon the day and how many parents drive. Or especially at the high school, how many, how many students choose to, to drive themselves, so. That, that's another challenge, but that's why we're doing the assigned seats. In order to do contract tr- contact tracing if and when something uh. It breaks out as far as a COVID or a close contact or something like that, so. Go ahead, John. Or Mark? Oh, you want me to talk about tents now? Okay, very, very good. Okay, we're in the uh, process right now. Of acquiring tents with sides, tables and chairs. Uh, we've had the representative of the company meet with uh. I think most every principal. This is for. The high school, for the upper elementary school and for Merrimack Middle School. We have been fortunate enough to be able to put our names on. Uh, six tents, they're twenty feet by forty feet. They'll have walls and we will have them by uh, mid-June. What that'll do is allow the buildings to have additional space. They could serve lunch out there if they wanted to. They could use them as addition- additional instructional space. Uh, Nancy, once the locations are, are, um, you know, decided upon, which most of them are right now. Uh, we'll let you know well in advance to string some cable and put some uh, some wireless uh, access points. At the exterior of the building, so those areas will have uh, will have wifi. So it'll be a good spot for lunches, mask breaks, larger group activities and any kind of meetings. It's gonna be in addition to the classroom space that's inside the building proper.
Thank you, Matt, very much.
So none of these will be in place to take advantage of this school year. Well, the rest of the school year, uh, I mean, mid-June is when the school is going to end. So they need them back because they're gonna be utilizing them for uh, graduations.
We'll have the remainder of the school year.
No, we'll have them until mid-June, sorry. I'm sorry if I left out that, that crucial word. We'll get them as soon as we can and we will have them until mid-June.
Ah, okay, thank you. That's great.
John, do you wanna talk about the instructional?
Yes, Mark. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, classrooms, um, again, assigned seating. You know, we, we again looked at this and said. The best way for us to contact trace if we are going to limit space is assigned seats and you're gonna hear this. Over and over about multiple areas, we'll be assigning seats. Uh, limited movement in the classrooms. We're going to try to keep kids again, uh, separate as much as they can without too much interaction. No mask breaks inside, we talked about that already. The tents will uh, supplies are placed that we can do mask breaks in. Plexi for science tables, reading groups, another designated areas. I just wanna pause here for a second and said. The integrity of our educational system is very important to us and I wanna be very clear for anyone listening in that. Is that we wanna continue to teach and continue to do, do the methods that are important in learning. Such as at, at our upper elementary school, doing some collaborative reading groups and doing our reading groups in, in our. Our daily guided reading. It's important to our program and our district. And all along, um, as we've been in other models and we've been in our, our cohort models, it's allowed us to still keep. The educational integrity happening. And I think that's important to us. There will have to be some limitations as we move forward. Still important, still at the forefront, but we probably will not be doing as much grouping kids together if they're all in the classroom together. And I just wanna point that out. So thank you. Mark, to you?
Yeah, John, I just wanna uh, uh, build on that point. So it's very important. Uh, to remind the board and the community that what we've been trying to do this whole time. Is to make sure that when we have students in school. That they're taught by certified people in that area. And we have worked very hard to achieve that goal. We have not uh, put students in, you know, taking physics with somebody who teaches English just because they're. Uh, you know, a live body and we're trying to get through the day. So that's one of the things that John means by academic integrity. We've really worked hard to make sure that teachers certified in an area are the ones teaching that course. We also have worked very hard not to. As much as we're able to not have classes be. Uh, pushed together in large spaces. And kind of combined as has had to happen elsewhere. No criticism, everybody is doing the best job they can. But those are the things that we mean when we say academic integrity and. Uh, it might be the kind of thing that people don't realize how much effort goes into achieving that, but when your children are in school, they're being taught. For the most part, by the people who are supposed to teach them in environments that we're supposed to teach them in. And we're. Trying to maintain that as much as possible. The other thing I just wanna point out before we move on. Is I very much share the sentiment of one of the people who commented that Vice Chair Barnes read. Uh, but I do have to comment on one thing. Uh, an individual said, looking forward to chatter and laughter in the hallways. So we don't think as a team that we're doing the board or the community any kind of service. By sugarcoating certain realities. Uh, it would be very easy to just, you know, sweep it all under, but. We don't think that that's the responsible thing to do. So chatter and uh, and laughter in the hallways, we certainly want that. None of us came into this profession for anything else. But right now, let's be clear, school is not looking, nor will it look exactly like. We'd like it to look. It can't. If it does, then we have abandoned our responsibility. Uh, to maintain the safety requirements that we're required to maintain. Uh, at the moment, we're required to. So, uh, I would just point out. An article written by a woman named Maggie McQueen, a psychologist, um, said. Uh, some folks uh, are failing to appreciate how the significant changes necessitated by the pandemic. Uh, will render schools nearly unrecognizable for the time being. No lesser authority than the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention is urging schools to reopen in order to provide the development. Of social and emotional skills in a safe environment for learning. But schools can't fill those needs while an epidemic is ongoing. So I just wanna point out, we've said this all along, we can't have it both ways. We can't have students in school in great numbers and have it look like it used to look. We can't even do that when students are happy. So we, we can decide and I'm sure that the board will decide as it has always done. And what they see is the best interest of our school district, but I would just point out, I can't. Uh, overlook the reality that when people say they want their children to come back to school so that it is like it was, it can't be. Uh, and we are really, if anybody's been in the uh, schools lately, you'll see, we have one-way signs. We urge students to move along. One of the things that's very important that the seat, that the DHHS has just talked about. Is they'll uh, lower the distancing to three feet, but only in a controlled environment. Well, if you've been to school uh, recently, you know that in a normal day, there are lots of. You know, what would be classified as uncontrolled environments, not out of control, but uncontrolled, like passing in the hallway. And, and uh, other environments where we cannot guarantee three feet of space, just can't. And we just don't want to give anybody the impression that we're promising something we can't deliver. So we're just trying to be honest with you about that. Uh, so anyway, I, I just had to point that out because though we might very much like things to be like we remember them. Just not possible quite yet. We're doing our best, but not quite possible quite yet. Anyway, John, go ahead. Uh, oh no, so the proposed date to begin, uh, to, to rather, um. To implement this plan would be uh, May third, twenty twenty-one. We have worked closely with our nurses, our medical folks, uh, who have been. The saviors through this process. And one of the things that we are really, and you'll hear a little bit more about this in a minute, really hoping for. Is uh, to get to a place where we can be. A little bit off of April vacation. We understand that people are likely to travel. And whether they tell us they're traveling or don't tell us they're traveling, they will be traveling. And uh, the impact, we have seen this pattern all along. We've seen every time there's a break of some sort. Or a holiday, the numbers uh, spike. And while it's absolutely true that schools are not vectors of transmission. Schools are not exempt from the impact of transmission. So if somebody goes off and does whatever they do privately on the weekend. And then either uh, become exposed to somebody with COVID or uh. Develop it themselves. They bring that into school. So they might not, uh, it might not be that they initially caught it in school. But we have to, have to, uh, quarantine as a result. And that has an impact, like we've said all along, on staffing and on the ability to. Uh, surgically quarantine people. And so we are trying to limit, and we've heard a lot about pivots, pivots, pivots. Well, one thing that we're trying to limit is the number of pivots that would happen if we go back. Right now with an uptick and then have to quarantine students. Uh, and maybe more than before because we have more students in. In any event. We will, as always, do as the board directs, but our recommendation. For those reasons and a few others that you'll hear, uh, would be to uh, begin this. Uh, plan, uh, implement this plan on May third. So, um, we're gonna move on now to some of the considerations. That we'd like the board and the community to take into account as it makes its decision. Back again to the idea that. We don't feel like we're doing our job if we don't tell you what the reality is, is we're experiencing it, so that you can make a fully informed decision. So, uh, John, next slide. So. I just wanna remind the board and the community that we've really operated on four goals throughout this year. The first one. Uh, is virus mitigation to maintain student and staff safety. It never occurred to me that that would be a particularly controversial position to take in the middle of a pandemic. And we wholeheartedly embrace that. That is one of our chief responsibilities. We also have as a goal managing the impacts of the virus on school operations. We have said that we're trying very hard to have integrity in our instruction when we have students. In both hybrid and uh, fully remote and live in person. And, and we have been able to achieve that. Um, by mitigating some of the. Contagion that could happen. Uh, if we had too many students back at the moment, so. We wanna continue our instruction as close to what it is uh, as we can. We want to. We want to not have to have. A person certified in one area, teaching a class uh, in another area because. We might have them in school, but we don't really call that adequate instruction. We also are desperately trying to keep the schools operating. So you recall that we had an incident in the fall when we had to shut down the middle school for two weeks. That didn't help anybody. Um, and so we're trying very hard to limit the need for that kind of uh, action. Now, we are working very hard throughout this year and will continue to work very hard to make that happen. But there are factors that make that easier or less easy to achieve. So, uh, the board can do with that information what it wants, but we don't feel. Like we're being honest with people if we don't just acknowledge that as a challenge. That is a challenge. And then, of course, uh, our goal is to provide the best education that, that conditions allow. I don't think anybody listening or anybody here, uh, would suggest that these are the best conditions for education. It's not just unique to Merrimack, but we're trying very hard to provide the best, most authentic. Learning experiences we can, given the constraints that we're working under. So in any event, with that in mind, those goals, uh, we wanna just talk about. Uh, some of the potential impacts of increased populations in grades five through twelve. So, John?
Thank you very much, Mark. Um, so you're going to hear now from a lot of our, uh, our administrators and our nurses that are with us today. Uh, really around some, some impacts of increased populations in grade five through twelve. And what, and what we see are things that really, as Mark said, the community really should be aware of. Um, as we offer choi- Um as we offer choice, I think it's important that you know what you're choosing and what some of the impacts will be in our system. So I'll turn it over right now to um to Shawna Demore. Shawna, would you like to to begin?
Hi, uh Shawna Demore, the Assistant Principal of Merrimack Middle School. Can we go to the next slide? I just wanted to open it up afterwards uh to my colleagues at J M U's in the high school. If I fail to mention anything that might be pertinent uh to your school and also the nurses, feel free to jump in. Uh just speaking about the increased population and uh the social distancing. I'm just gonna speak of my observations at the middle school. Uh the kids have been amazing at wearing masks. We have guidelines in place, we have procedures in place. They are social beings. Um they are not trying to be defiant, they just naturally gravitate towards each other. And so you'll hear, you'll walk the halls and you will hear, guys, get a move apart, get a distance. Hey, everybody, you're getting a little too close together. And that lasts, you know, a couple of minutes, and then they just naturally gravitate back towards one another. And it's not all the kids, but it's enough that you will hear that phrase uttered repeatedly, especially during lunches um where their masks are off and they are spaced out. But they get up to throw out their trash and they'll just kind of gravitate towards their friends. And again, it's just a developmentally appropriate thing that they want to socialize. They're getting close without realizing it. And I just wanted to let you know, we're gonna make every effort to maintain the three feet. And it's not for lack of trying or for lack of having uh the procedures in place. It's just the age group that we're working with, five through twelve, and it's just, you know, their natural behaviors. So um I just wanted to speak, that's, you know, a daily observation that's happening pretty much throughout the day at the middle school. I'll offer it up if I missed anything to J M U's and my colleagues at the high school.
John, I mean, I just add that we at the upper elementary school have recess and we find that same situation, you know, we're out there without a mask, so we're trying to maintain six feet. So but they'll naturally gravitate together, we move them apart. We keep uh one group on the field and one group on the playground area. When all the students come back, we'll take a group that's typically about twelve students and then I'll go to twenty-four on each of those locations. The field is a little bit easier, the playground might be a little bit tighter, but we have to work constantly. Just a part of the age group, they want to socially be with their friends, they want to talk, so that's six feet. We're constantly saying, spread apart, remember six feet, so just want to reinforce that.
Hi, I'm Joanne, I'm the school nurse at J M U's. Um I just wanted to say, just comment on the size of our kids. Um because it's amazing when they come to us as fifth graders, how small they are and how big they get by the time they're sixth graders. Uh you would walk into our school and think that you have a lot of middle schoolers or high schoolers in our kid, in our, when you see our kids. Um so definitely the size of our kids is a, can make a difference too in the spacing.
Thank you, Joanne. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on this before I move on? Thank you. And next, talk about current practices uh versus uh projected practices, increased in population, an impact on contact tracing. So I'll turn this to Patty Schrinard, one of our high school nurses.
Hi, good evening. Um so I just want to say, I never thought that I would like be fluent in a new language called COVID tracing, but I feel like that's what's happened this year. Um so the overall premise of this slide is to really highlight the potential change in how contact tracing is done and the number of students and um staff that may be affected by bringing in a larger population. Because at this point, whether we're hybrid or we're back full-time, we're still required to contact trace. So what needs to be really considered at this point is the increased number of potential exposures that will occur because we're bringing more students back into the building. So in our current cohort model, um and I'm gonna speak um to the high school and similarly at the high, at the middle school, um we've been able to manage contact tracing really well. Um primarily, it's because we've had smaller population in the school and we've had a staggered hybrid schedule. So for example, if we have a B student who's called out sick on Wednesday morning, they test positive, they notify the nurse. We go back two days or forty-eight hours for contact tracing purposes. Um and what we determine in that case is that there's no in-school exposures and there's no um need to do any contact tracing at that point within the school setting because the last day that that student was in school was six days ago. And I can't tell you how many times that has saved us from having to quarantine several other students um because of a potential exposure in the school setting. So if you take that same student who's now coming back four days a week or five days a week, and they're in school Monday, Tuesday, they're called out sick on Wednesday, they test positive. We now have to contact trace for sixteen classrooms, hallway passing time, lunchtime, transportation, whether they take the bus or they take their car, friends that they may have come in contact with after school. And then we have to pray that they don't play sports, right? Because that's another whole can of worms that gets opened up. And while there are certainly um instances when we're doing that right now, it's still only impacting a few students per exposure because we have fewer students in the building and our current social distancing safety guidelines um limit those exposures or minimize those exposures. And we're able to do much more precise um contact tracing based on those measures that are already in place. Um so once you bring more students into the building, you automatically increase the number of exposures and close contacts. And that list of close contacts has the potential of going from like three students to a whole classroom. And while we're gonna continue to do everything that we need to do to keep our students safe and our staff safe, it certainly becomes more challenging to determine who falls into that close contact category. And like our sports teams where it's really, really difficult to determine who close contacts are, the decision may then be to, instead of quarantining just a few students, we have to quarantine a whole classroom. And that's mainly because of spacing issues within the classroom, the crowds, um it's gonna be more crowded in the hallways. There's gonna be more students on the bus potentially. So with more exposures come more quarantines, I mean, it's, that's just the reality of the situation.
Thank you, Patty. Um Adam Carragher, would you like to add anything to this?
Yep. So um so I would definitely like to speak to it a little bit uh from more of a personal experience. Um and living in a district where uh the students have been in school uh for for the year, I can tell you right now that having a kindergartner, a third grader and a middle schooler, uh each of my students has been impacted where uh large groups uh potentially grade levels, uh at least classes at the middle school, high school level, a little bit more complicated where um you know, sections of of staff are taken out as close contacts and therefore impacting the ability to be able to provide any uh any education uh other than remote education uh for those students. So there is the potential, um and I've seen it again in my own, my own personal life, to have to pivot from uh school one day on a Monday, as a matter of fact, not too long ago on a Monday morning, uh to a remote world on a Tuesday and then pivot back uh once that is over. And so there's definitely some challenges uh that are that are a part of that. And it's something to weigh in your thought, in the thought process and the decision-making process that that you are working on.
Thank you, Adam. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this before I move on? Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna move on to um to Melissa. Would you like to talk about some of the data?
Yes, good evening, thank you. So these next few slides represent a summary of positive cases and quarantine impact within our schools. And there are a few different data points we use in an effort to show the impact COVID nineteen has had in our schools. So this includes positive cases, which is exactly that, a student or staff member who has tested positive. And the other factor we used was quarantine not positive, which uh could include travel quarantine, close contact quarantine, or anyone who is exhibiting new or unexplained symptoms of COVID nineteen and should be uh quarantining away from from school. Uh next slide. So I'll speak to the staff impact and then turn to our nurses to speak to the student impact. And this slide represents the school year-to-date numbers by month. And I won't read off every number, but I would like to draw your attention to the final number of three hundred and twenty, which is to date, the number of staff members who have been impacted in the form of needing to quarantine this school year. So with about seven hundred and fifty staff members, this accounts for about forty-three percent of our staff. And this number may be higher or lower. Uh it may be lower than the true impact because we also have staff that are remote that may not report symptoms because they are not uh reporting to school. And if we take out the remote staff, that number is actually fifty percent of staff impact who um have needed to quarantine this school year. So I will now turn it over to the nurses uh to give the overview of student data.
Okay, so if you want to go to the next slide, please. Okay, hi, my name's Karen Hamilton, I'm the nurse at the high school, and I'm gonna be speaking on the trends at the high school. So I'm a nurse, but I love data. Um data tells a story. It shows us where we've been and it gives us a glimpse into future trends. So I'm not gonna read you the numbers, but I want to point out some things that are reflected within the numbers that you're looking at right now. First of all, I'm gonna start with January. We had an increase in quarantines and positive cases in the month. And this increase can be explained, we had heightened numbers of COVID cases um within the community of Merrimack. Uh we had families who traveled over the um holiday break, excuse me, and had to qua- quarantine due to travel. Or families that traveled and they had an exposure, ended up testing positive. And that can be um, that can have a an effect that's very long-lasting in a family because somebody gets it, everyone's quarantined, and somebody else gets it, so they have to start their quarantine over. So those can be really long um quarantines. In February, we only had three weeks of instruction and it was, it was much quieter than January. However, if you add together the total quarantine and the COVID positive student um numbers, quieter still represents seven and a half percent of our entire student population who was quarantined and out of the building for part of the month. In March, we've seen a steady uptick tick in quarantines as well as positive cases. Um some of this, again, can be attributed to um people who traveled over break. Um but the bulk of this was COVID exposures in the general community. Um because once again, we're having an uptick in the community as well as sports-related exposures. Due to the nature of some sports, when there's a positive case on a team, oftentimes because we can't really figure out who, we we can't determine and say for sure that um people were not all in um contact together, that we end up quarantining the entire team. So as we review March's numbers at the high school, um twenty percent of the entire high school population was quarantined or tested positive during the month of March, twenty percent. So the final observation I'd like to make is there are some students who are not reflected in this chart. Very few of these numbers include students who are fully remote. Uh like Melissa said, with staff who's fully remote, we're finding that when students who um are remote have a direct exposure or travel, that the parents do follow the quarantine guidelines, but they don't notify the school because they don't, their their kids aren't in the building and they don't think that it's necessary. So I just wanted to point that out because that does affect our numbers and they're probably a little bit higher than what's actually reflected on the chart. So then I don't know if um Stephanie or Joanne wanted to speak into that.
Hey, I'm Steph Davenport, I'm the nurse up at Merrimack Middle School. And uh much the same as we're seeing at the high school, we're seeing the same thing at the middle school, just on a smaller scale because we have a smaller population. Um same thing, when we came back from Christmas, we saw an uptake. Um when we came back in the middle of January, actually, we saw an uptake for the remainder of that month. Um it slowed down for us a little bit in February with our three weeks of instruction. But then again, as you're seeing our numbers in March, we also had an uptick, um particularly in our quarantined kids. So you know, the same things that are happening at the high school are happening at the middle school. Um we have lots of siblings that interchange on between all of the schools. Um but we 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 tend to, you know, pretty regularly see siblings in the high school and the middle school. Um so similar things happen in our school that happens up at the high school. I I think that, you know, the numbers are pretty clear that when uh we're returning from vacation times or we're um coming back from breaks or or whatnot, people are traveling and that's when we're seeing that uptick um in our case studies and and how many kids we're having to quarantine, whether related to symptoms or exposures or travel. Um and then the positives are are popping up a little bit more as well.
Joanne?
Yep, and I just want to say, uh agree with, I agree with Karen and Stephanie, it's the same thing at the upper elementary school. Um you know, as you can see by the number, in January, we had eight positive cases, that's the most I had. Luckily, we did not have, those happened over Christmas break, so again, during vacations. Um so the school was not impacted as greatly because most of the kids have not been in school. Um and again, after February vacation, we definitely saw an uptick in uh the amount of kids ready to quarantine, the amount of kids exposed. Um and if we do come back full-time uh after the break, I'm just concerned with having full classroom, how it's going to affect the number of kids who are gonna have to quarantine in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. So there's definitely going to be some also impacts on uh curriculum, curriculum and instruction. And I'm gonna turn to uh Sharon Putney, our principal of the high school, to begin this conversation.
Thank you. And um you know, Mr. Zampieri, Mr. Bergeron, feel free to uh jump in or add something at the end. Um obviously, the proposal also will have some impacts on curriculum and instruction. The the concurrent learning model that we're in right now um does allow students that are home to be able to zoom in. Um but this is not um a perfect system, it's far from ideal. You know, it's, it can be challenging having students in multiple environments. Um so just um just to be realizing that, um we do have excellent teachers. And you know, I've gone by classrooms where I literally see people running around, trying to make sure that all the kids are are getting, you know, what they need to the best of their ability with a um a far-from-ideal situation. And I know that, you know, these, um our staff will continue to um, you know, do whatever they can, especially through the pandemic, to just um be helping students to get what they need. Um what I see is um some of the challenges um with having more students in the building is that those changes that I think we will probably see are around, really, we're trying to um as staff, move away from kind of a teacher-centered approach to teaching, to more of a student-centered approach, uh where the teachers are more facilitators and coaches. And that model is is very difficult and will become more difficult. So that's just one of the things to kind of be aware of. Um project-based um, you know, assignments or projects that are um partner activities or group activities will just be really difficult because um with half the students that we've had in, it's been a little bit easier to um continue some of those and be uh in appropriate distance away, and I think that's just going to become more challenging without that. So just that, some of that experiential learning that we um really encourage is just going to be more challenging. It's just something to kind of be aware of, is that the, you know, the model is going to need to change. It may be um less than what we would look for in an ideal classroom setting um on both ends of things. But you know, as always, um our staff, as I said, are excellent. They will, I'm sure, just continue to do whatever they can to support students. Um you know, and give them um everything that they have to be able to you know, have the best education that they can have under the circumstances. I don't know if there's anything, um anyone else from the high school wants to add?
I can add something real quick, just to echo what Sharon said, there's a lot of stopping and going uh that our staffs had to do. And they've adjusted well and they have uh collaborated greatly with one another. So we've seen a lot of positives from this. So that that's been, that's been a good thing. Bringing back students, we're gonna do our best we can. Bringing back students, we're gonna do our best we can and make adjustments, just that. I was in a classroom the other day with, you know, eight students and I'm thinking now we go to sixteen students. Then I walk into another class with ten students and we go to twenty and fifteen and then thirty. You know, psychologically, you know, you have that many more students in a classroom. You know, not just for the teacher, but for the students. Once again, it's another adjustment, but our teachers each and every time have rose to the occasion and, you know, thank God for. You know, Nancy Rose, Chris Lorenzo, Jeff Johnson and the rest of the IT people and Mark Maryfield that help us each and every day. Get through those little issues we have, I know when Shannon let, read a letter earlier from a parent about the platforms and that's very true, but. You know, if a teacher doesn't have an answer, they're gonna go to the right person and get that answer and help that particular student out, that's unfortunate to hear that, but I think. You know, the teachers do the very best they can to streamline procedures for reaching every student. Thank you.
And I would just like to add one thing that Mr. Bergeron noted in terms of collaboration. We, we'd like to maintain the collaboration time that we have in place. Due to the fact that the role like at the high school. Departments have role like classes and the teammates meet together on Fridays. Where they do plan the concurrent learning lessons that are both appearing in the class as well as online. So that's an important aspect that they take advantage of, that is critical to the success of the concurrent learning as, as we currently see it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nicole Rowe, the assistant principal at the upper elementary school. And I'd just like to talk a moment for the potential of sudden or unexpected shifts that we have to be aware of, so. Our approach to co, to contact tracing is extremely systematic, we're getting pretty good at it. We know that in the elementary school, there are lots of people that go in and out of any room and that's, that's true of the middle school and the high school as well. Right now, when we contract trace, we go through a list of all of our specialists, we go through a list of all of the teachers that could be in a room. And there's really two major considerations, either if a teacher is impacted. Or if a child, if, if there is a positive case with the child or a positive case with the teacher. A positive case with the teacher, a teacher could be someone who sees many different classes. And so if that teacher tests positive on a Monday or on a Wednesday. There was a cohort that that teacher wouldn't necessarily have exposed. However, now our kids will all be in, so that could be a potential for twice as many children who are exposed. Especially if that teacher sees a lot of classes. And while our, our plan is very systematic for COVID tracing, we know that we have to be really careful. To make sure that anyone that was exposed is quarantined. Same with, with students, we have lots of different people in the classroom and we consistently say to teachers who always wanna. Be able to support their kids the best way they can and to be able to look over their shoulder that, you know, please be careful. We, we want to make sure that everyone is safe in the classrooms and we know that when we're bringing more kids back, we. We have to think that there could be sudden shifts that affect many more people. We have been lucky with the cohorts to be able to really look at the data and determine many people, teachers and students who aren't close contacts. And there is potential that that could change with a larger number in the school. So we just, we, we will continue to do our very best and continue to remind people of the social distancing rules. But also know that that is a potential outcome.
And I'm gonna speak on the next bullet, so when we open fully, it means there's gonna be more people in the building. Our social distancing is gonna go from six feet to three feet in a controlled environment. And we can expect just based on data that we've seen in the past, that cases are gonna go up. More people, more exposures, equal increased quarantines. What this bullet is referring to is the concern regarding if we were to open up prior to April break. That with more kids in the building, we're probably gonna see more, more cases. And that, and exposures, and we're actually gonna end up quarantining kids through their April break, which that's not a fun phone call to make. The next point, the next bullet is that we can also anticipate, as shown by our data from January, March. Which for the post-break months, that exposures and cases will go up after students return from break. That just seems to be the trend. But with vaccinations being rolled out, that's really exciting, we're hoping to see that these numbers will start coming down, so that's, that's the silver lining in all of it.
And to that point, I'm gonna jump in here and just talk a little bit about that impact that coming back prior to April vacation could potentially have. On us in the way of staff that are fortunately right now in the middle of receiving their first vaccinations. Some have had their second appointment set up already. We had a, we had a big bunch of people, a bunch of staff members from our school district at a clinic this weekend. That all got their first shot, all of them, they're got their first shot and they're scheduled to have their second vaccination. The first weekend of April vacation. So as we know, New Hampshire DHA's current guidelines for quarantining of close contacts are. That we have to quarantine someone from ten day, for ten days from their last exposure to the positive person. So if, ten days from their last exposure to the person. And if the only two ways that we don't have to quarantine someone is if they are fully vaccinated. Or if they've had COVID within the last ninety days. Okay, so with the rollout of vaccinations for our staff, our teachers and our support staff. And now even some of our students sixteen plus. This has a huge impact on, this could potentially have a huge impact on them. Because if you are scheduled to have an appointment and you have been quarantined as a close contact because you're not fully vaccinated yet or you have not had COVID. Then you have to cancel your appointment and you cannot receive that vaccination while in quarantine. The reason being is quarantine is a public health mandate, you're not supposed to leave your home. And leaving your home to come to a vaccination site has the potential to spread the virus. So, you know, you, you, we get to this point with these teachers and in moving forward, part of this is that we have to. Get people vaccinated and we're really excited about the ability to finally do this. And coming back a little bit too soon. Where we're not close enough to when they will be considered fully vaccinated. Has some, some, you know, some real potential for academic disruption for us. If we have to put down those staff members and students sixteen plus. That haven't reached that point of being considered fully vaccinated, which is fourteen days post their last vaccination. So something to consider there as well.
Thank you, I'd like to talk a little bit about the disruption of what we've established as our patterns for instruction that we have so far. I'd like to start by saying, or reiterating what Principal Putney had talked about with our educators. They're excellent educators, they work incredibly hard, they do a fabulous job with the work they have. They, they work really hard to transition students from one activity to the next. To make sure that that's smooth, that they try to maximize that academic time. We're going into a situation now where, you know, coming back to school, we're not gonna be able to maintain the three feet distance with students. So we need to move out of our classrooms and into larger spaces and we've made those accommodations to be able to do that and have that available. Into tents, into the APR. But every time we make that transition, that transition takes time. The students that are in school, we move them, the students that are online need to then be shut off. And then they go off, do any kind of a, say a mask break that they may have, a snack, a lunch, they come back. They have to then get that all up and running again, so. Just wanna talk about, you know, how hard our teachers work for that transition, but we know there's gonna be a lot more pivoting. Also that pivoting, you know, in and out if there are possible contact tracing and they have to quarantine. So all of those take times and those transitions are always difficult for students, but again, our staff work was really hard. We're prepared to do the best job we can, we appreciate all the support we have with tents and Plexiglas and everything to help. Try to keep those disruptions to a minimum.
Thank you all very much, and on to some financial aspects of this and I'll turn back to Matt.
Thank you, John. You recall that, well. We had the CARES Act fund, there's three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in that fund. Fourteen thousand nine forty-two had to go to support a local private school per the DOE regulations, which we accommodated them. But that, that money has been, has been spent. So we spent it primarily on, you know, remember we started this in the summertime, we had a transitional task force. We put almost four thousand hours into that. Everybody got paid who was not an administrator. That was around twenty-five dollars an hour and it's around ninety-four thousand dollars that we spent on that. Instructional materials, that was another fifty-four thousand. The sneeze guards, the spray nozzles, the goggles, the disposable face masks, the PPE, it's around sixty thousand dollars. We have storage containers, cause each school got two school, storage, storage containers. To move out unnecessary furniture, to make room for, you know, the spacing that was required being six feet. Now we're, we're bringing that back in to put more kids in, in classrooms. The technology was prob-
Appears that Matt has froze again, and he's having some technical issues, right when he said technology, he froze. So I will, I'll start and if he, I'll continue and if he jumps back in, I hope he does jump, jump back in. I think that really, the big part of this is the message, oh, here you go, Matt, you're back in, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And to, to put in that, that, all that equipment in place, you know, we had to do that by the end of December. So there was a lot of hardware for wireless purchase, there were a lot of devices purchased. There were the three sixty cameras that were purchased. A lot of PPE, forty, at least forty, fifty thousand dollars for the equipment that we use to. Fog the building at night and all the safety equipment that goes along with that to keep our custodians safe. Now we've got a, a third round of funding, there's six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in that. And now we're gonna be looking at putting in tents, we're gonna be putting in more Plexi. More PPE, substitute teachers, I'm not sure how much that's going to cost or additional personnel expenditures. But the tents, we know that's gonna be approximately around sixty-five thousand dollars to take us to the end of the year. For the, for the rental of six twenty by forty tents. So you look at it and you say, my gosh, that's, that's been a lot of money and thank goodness we had the, the funds from the, the federal government flowing through the state government. And of that six hundred and thirty-three, we've committed probably a larger, maybe a hundred thousand dollars of that already. And I know the board wanted to take four hundred thousand dollars of that to buy computers to get more to one to one. But we're gonna be bumping into that pretty soon if we continue along this path, I don't see it climbing too much past that point. But that is indeed going to be an expenditure to bring us to the end of the year. So basically, that's where we're looking, look, that's where we look as far as the financial data goes. And I can produce spreadsheets showing this all in minute detail, cause it's all grant funded anyway, so. That's, that can be available to you if you wanna take a look at all the, the detail.
Thank you, Matt, very much, yeah. Onto Mark for our-
Okay, so I wanted, I wanted just kinda end by. Letting the board know that we're providing this information, really, I mean, we're ready to go and do whatever the board asks, we always are. But we have heard the board say many times that they appreciate transparency. And what we tried to give you tonight is some honest reflection about what some of the challenges are. We don't say it to indicate that it's impossible, we've, you know, nothing has been impossible this year. But we do think it's important, if you're gonna be making some important decisions, that you have. You know, as much information at your disposal as you can, that seems like it's the right thing to do. But we pledge to you now, as we always have, that we'll do what the board directs. I would just close by saying that this week, there was an interview with the new director of the Center, Centers for Disease Control, Dr. Rochelle Walensky. And Dr. Anthony Fauci, and in that joint interview. They expressed some concern and they both appealed to elected officials, community leaders and everyday Americans to maintain. Social distancing, they, they worked very hard to make that point. Just a couple of other things from that interview, Dr. Walensky said, we have so much to look forward to, so much promise and potential of where we are. And so much reason to hope, but right now, you know, she said, I'm a little scared. We're not trying to be gloom and doom or, you know, fear monger, but this is what she said. And we are merely reflecting some of the realities that she seems to be expressing. Dr. Fauci said, he worries that we're doing things a little prematurely, asks if we can just hold on a little longer. And then mentioned that we've seen surges after every single holiday and then please limit traveling and so on. So, so these are the people in charge of, of managing this challenge. And you know, that's their position this week. And so it doesn't mean that we follow it or heed it, but I think in the spirit of just, you know, being real about what it is. We thought it was important to just share these things with the board, we're sure that you have many questions and we're happy to address as many of them as we can. And those we can't, we'll tell you and we'll get back to you as quickly as we can. So thank you.
Okay, questions? Lori?
So I have a question for Matt, Matt, according to the operational strategies for K through twelve schools. On March nineteenth, twenty twenty, it said they removed the recommendation for physical barriers. I'm just wondering what that recommendation actually is stating.
They removed the recommendation for physical barriers? Well, I recall when we were talking about bringing back K through four and we purchased Plexiglas. So you're saying they removed the recommendations for Plexiglas?
I'm not sure, that's why I'm asking you.
I, I, I don't know, that's the first I've heard of it.
Yep, so this, this is on, on the New Hampshire School Board Association website. And it's operational strategies, K through twelve schools through phase prevention, March nineteenth, twenty twenty. And they updated recommendations and they said remove recommendation for physical barriers, so that's my question.
Well, I'm not sure what that is, it's the first I've, I've heard of it, maybe Mark or John have heard of it before.
I have not.
No, so. That's, that's something new and different, as in every day we turn around, it's something new and different. Now, now the, now the, the, the recommendation is all the Plexiglas that all the school districts purchased. Really wasn't necessary in the first place. So that, that's kinda surprising to me, but I'd like to take a look at that to see what it says.
Yeah, it's, again, it's operational strategy, K through twelve schools. And March nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, okay, if you could, I could probably find it, is it easy to find, if not?
Go right on the New Hampshire School Board Association website, everything's listed there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Andy, and then Jenna?
So the presentation has, you've laid out sort of the, the details of how you think each of the, across all the schools, I think you would do this. And you spent a lot of time explaining what the risks are and stuff. I'd like to hear a little bit from an administrator's perspective. I'd like to hear a little bit from, uh, administrators' perspective, what you see the benefits of bringing the kids back. I mean, we, we get a lot of pressure from the board, from parents that want their kids to come back for the social, uh, the emotional part of it, the being in front of the teacher more frequently. We know the challenges in terms of the, the amount of kids coming back, but there's gotta be benefits that the administrators see to having kids back to get more of that culture, more of the, that environment. I mean, you talked about the downside of education that could occur with more kids trying to space, but what are the upsides? I wanna hear the, the glass-half-full part of this, I guess, maybe that's what I'm looking for.
Uh, Sharon?
You know, I definitely think that there are students that, um, you know, are struggling, um, that would benefit from coming into the building more often, um, no question about it. I think the, the benefit of the proposal is the choice piece of it. Um, I have interviewed quite a few students recently that have said that, you know, they're pretty used to kind of, um, they've gotten used to this new system and, um, kind of organizing themselves for the week. And so, they're, they're hoping, the students that I've heard from are, are hoping that they have a choice involved, so that if it's working for them, um, that they'd be able to kind of work within what the current model is. But I do, you know, definitely think, Andy, that there are some students that would, you know, obviously, you know, obviously, the best thing, you know, uh, for some of those students is to have, you know, more contact. I think, you know, what we laid out certainly is just their benefits, and, and just to, to recognize that, you know, something goes by the wayside as we bring more kids into the building. But, you know, I definitely think that, you know, there are students that would benefit from that, no question about it.
Shauna?
Um, I just, we want the students back, and we want that more than anything. The best part of my day is having lunch duty and going to advisory and interacting with that small group of students. But it's, it is, I, I would invite anybody in just to see the, what it is like, because it is not the same as it was. It is, um, it's shocking if, i- the first time that you come back. We've had teachers come back from maternity leave or leave, and, you know, they haven't been there since the beginning of the year. And we've had a lot of time to get adjusted to this new way of doing things, and it's like, it's shocking to them. And, yeah, it is gonna be beneficial for those kids if it was the way that school used to be, and it's not that way right now. And so, I, I do see, yes, there are benefits to having the routine and having the kids see each other, but as Mark said, there's not that chatter in the hallway. There's, there's not the opportunity for kids, kids to get close and to socialize. And it's just presenting parents with the information so they can make an informed choice for their child. And, and so that's just, you know, my perspective on it.
Did I see Adam's hand in response to that question? Any other responses to, um, the question?
Yeah, I, I just, I would, um, I would, I would kinda hop in and, and say, there's definitely, you know, benefits. You know, having students in the building, I think, is, 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 could have very, very positive. But with that comes, comes the, the challenge of the, you know, the social distancing piece. And, you know, I think, you know, like Shauna said, we, we wanna have the kids back in the building. We want it to go back to, uh, not the new normal, but the old normal. And, and at some point in time, um, I, I think we will get there. So, I, I, definitely benefits, but there's definitely some, some challenges, and you have to go into it. And having been a parent, and, uh, again, on a little bit of a personal level and gone through that decision-making process myself, it's, it, it, it's challenging when you're talking about sending your students in, and, and you have to be thinking about, uh, these things. But, uh, there are benefits.
Thanks, nice to have you call.
Um, you know, it, this, this is all incredibly, um, emotional for us, because we love these children more than anything, that's why we do this. Most of us have never left school. We've been, you know, at school for over twenty years and still doing it, and waking up every morning to be with children. And, um, balanced with that is keeping our kids safe. And it's a, it's really, really tough, and it's tough as a parent. I have, I have a parent, I'm, I'm a parent of a child at the high school. And so, you know, I, I love the idea that we're giving parents and children choice to decide if a child wants to come in five days, our, our, our school's open. We know that that's the best choice for some kids, and we know that for other kids, it might be the best choice to stay at home, and they can make that choice. Of course, we want all of our kids back, and we wanna do it safely. And so, I think that's the thing that's the hardest for us, is, is, um, wrestling with the, how do we do this? And how do we think creatively? And I'll tell ya, we're racking our brains. Marcia and I talk at night, and we say, "Well, what if we did this, what if we did that?" Well, okay, we measured our cafeteria, well, how many kids can we fit in here? And, well, where could we put the kids? And how could we make this the most joyous experience for them, um, while keeping them safe? And so, uh, we know kids should be in school, there's no doubt. We love our kids in school, and, you know, uh, this is what I wanna do until I'm probably eighty. So, you know, it's, it's just, it's very, very tough for us. Um, i- it's a tough question, Andy. We know, we know what is best for kids. What's best for kids is for them to be with us and with their teachers. But it's also best to keep them safe, and I don't want any child getting sick on my watch. I, I, it, that would break my heart, and, and that's tough.
And do you still have the floor? Oh, I'm sorry, um, and then Marcia. Marcia in response.
I just, I agree with what everyone has said from Sharon through, um, Nikki, that, you know, we want the kids back. This is what we do, you know? Nikki, to eighty, I'm working my way there, you know, forty-six years as an educator. I want kids in the building, I wanna hear that laughter, I wanna see them. But I also wanna balance, as a, a leader of the building, that, that safety aspect. So, Nikki's right, we, we talk sometimes late into the evening, trying to rack our brains about, how do we balance this? And, and I think what we really need to do with, when we bring kids back, is to also look at it as like, it's almost like starting all over again. We're mixing two cohorts together. So, we wanna make sure that we're doing that, we're doing that right, we're balancing out that, um, ability to have them be there multiple days, to learn, families to make choices, but also to keep them safe. But, uh, we want the kids back, I think being back, um, with their peer group, being back with their educators, with their guidance counselors, with the supports that are in place, is always gonna be best for them. But like Shauna said, school doesn't look exactly the way it used to look. So, we're gonna have to just continue to work on it and make it the best place for them to be, and just can pin, continue to put forth our, our best effort. But Andy, we want them back, we love kids, th- that's what we've committed our lives to. So, we're gonna, you know, make it the best transition for them to come back.
Yeah, and, and just to close, I have other questions, but I'll let others ask theirs. But I, I really appreciate you guys being candid with your, your, your input, because I think that a lot of the presentation was around the risks, and, and those are real, I understand them. But there's also a benefit, and I'm glad that you guys see the benefit even though the risks are there. So, you're doing this balancing act of the, the pro-cons, the, and what you're trying to do. So, we as a board, and, you know, representing students and the administrator, everybody, I mean, we're sort of five people with things, heavy things on our shoulders to talk about here, is, um, we have to balance that, and we have to make sure that, that we're taking into account everybody's point of view. So, it's, it's very hard, but the more input that we get, the, the, better it is of the more informed decision that we can make as a board. So, thanks. So, Cindy, I'm done for now.
Okay, so Jenna, and then Lori.
Okay, so I don't know how, what, how you wanna handle this. I think I have two quick questions and some comments. I'll start my quick questions first. I just wanna clarify something, I think I understand it correctly, but I just wanna clarify. So, my kids are in cohort A. Are they expected to be in school still now on Monday and Tuesday, and then they can choose what to do Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday? Or is it optional, for lack of a word, like, do they choose all five days? My understanding is they can choose all five days.
That's true.
Okay, I may or may not tell them that, but I can choose all five days.
Well, I mean, let me be clear, we're, attendance isn't optional, you know, uh, they, they have-
Online or in person?
Right.
Okay, right, that's what I mean, like, they can choose every day to be online or in person, not whether to go to school or not.
Yes.
Okay. My second question, and I know in the grand scheme of this conversation, is slightly irrelevant, but I am curious. I love the tent idea, I, I have to say, I didn't come up with that, but where will they go? They're not gonna be put on like, like, where do they go, for example, at Jamie's?
I can answer-
We have a large courtyard.
Oh, right, okay, yeah.
We, Jenna, we're, we're at the high school, we're making a proposal, they're twenty-by-forty tents. I know Matt talked about the tents, and, and, and they came out, and they've did a nice job, we met with them, with Tom too. So, one of them's gonna be right in front of the CAF, the senior annex, and another one in the corner, or the far corner down near the, uh, what's called the high jump nap and the scoreboard, that area there. So, those are two good access points for our students to, you know, disperse from the building. We can use that area for instructional purposes, lunch, uh, mask breaks, so, we're, we're grateful to get those.
Okay, yeah, I, I really thought that was a cool idea.
And, uh, I could just, Nancy, if you could just speak briefly to the, uh, the wifi, and i- in the event that those are used, uh, on occasion, at least for instructional purposes, you've, you've done some, uh, working around that too, if you could just briefly talk about that?
Well, it's just, we're in the process of ordering access points and getting cabling installed so that it's done as quickly as possible in relation to where the tents are. So, it's, it's kind of up to the ability to get a cabling company, but we are on track, I think, to be able to do it, especially if we have the later start for this process.
Thank you.
Next to you, I'm gonna say back to you, Jenna?
Yeah, sorry, I hit my video button instead of my mute button. Okay, so I just had a couple things that, um, I wanted to say, and I don't know where to start. First of all, I, I, I appreciate how you talked about the, the benefits of kids coming to school, Andy, I thought that was a great question. And how you're, you're saying, you know, it won't look like regular school, but, you know, our kids have been in not regular school all year. And quite frankly, you know, a lot of the kids that want to go back, a couple of mine, you know, fall into that category. They know that school's weird right now, but it doesn't matter then, they still want to be back, you know what I mean? They know it's weird, they know they still have to be distanced, they know that it's not school like it's supposed to look, like you guys all said, but they still would rather be in a room six feet from their friends than home with me, or, you know what I mean, or just home by themselves. And, um, I think that's really important. I'm so grateful that you guys found a way to incorporate flexibility in parent and student choice. Uh, I mean, for seniors, I think, I think a seniors makes, because I have one, I mean, it's, it's hard for a lot of them to feel like they want to go back full-time, and I think of them, that's a population where I think it's really key to have those choices. But I think that we heard from a lot of people in the community who really didn't want their routines disrupted, and you've made it possible for them to keep that consistent at home. And I think that is of the utmost importance. And I, I, I have to say, I didn't foresee that being part of the plan, but I'm so grateful that it is, and I think there's a lot of parents that feel that way as well. I appreciate you making the realities of quarantine known to the community. That's definitely one big downside of this plan, or, you know, to, to put kids back in school in general. It's not the plan that you put together, that's the downside, it's the downside of kids being back full-time to begin with. But I talked to someone in the K two four schools today, and they told me that the benefits to them have outweighed the challenges, hands down. And so, I hope that, you know, I know there's a lot of fear and, you know, unknowns in, in regards to going back, but I think that you all, and I hope your teachers as well, will find that to be the case. I was really happy to hear that this person felt that the benefits outweighed the risks and the challenges. Um, a couple things I didn't hear a lot about, I heard a little bit about it, but I just wanna draw attention to the fact that, you know, vaccines are something that are really going to have an impact here, because as of, I mean, this past weekend, March twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, vaccinations were made possible for all staff in Merrimack, because at that vaccination clinic. So, all teachers could have been vaccinated by the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, many have did it before, but they all had the opportunity to do that. And two weeks post that date is April eleventh, which is great, because just today, and I have it up on my computer right now, and I can send a link to anybody who would like it. There was a study released by the CDC saying that this, the effus- the efficacy of vaccines, um, we now have some real-world data on that. And the real-world data is that after your first vaccination, once you're two weeks past your first vaccination, you are, um, eighty percent protected, and you will only get another ten percent from that full immunization. And that's fantastic news, right? We all wanna be a hundred percent vaccinated, turns out that's not actually what the vaccinations give you, they give you ninety percent. But eighty percent after your first shot, uh, uh, post-two weeks after your first shot, which would be April eleventh. That's really, really good news. The other really, really good news is that all people ages sixteen and over can be vaccinated starting April second. That means that a large portion of our student population at the high school will be eligible for vaccines, starting April second. Now, we know some parents will choose that, some parents and students will not choose that, but I think a lot will. And the ones that do, that has a huge impact on our having to have so many people go remote. If our, if our teachers are being vaccinated, and our students, some of our students choose to be vaccinated, there's a whole population that is kind of removed from that push-to-remote scenario. And so, I think it's important for that to be mentioned as part of the factors here. And it's the same thing with, um, you know, traveling. You know, when they're vaccinated, they don't have to quarantine from travel either. So, that, there's kind of all of that. So, those are just kind of the things I wanted to highlight. Vaccines are a game changer, and they're rolling out quickly in New Hampshire. I'm really grateful, um, to the leadership in New Hampshire for doing that. It's, it's going to be a game changer, and I think that, you know, starting, starting towards late April, early May, we're gonna start seeing that be a real difference maker.
All right, and then I, uh, saw Lori after you.
So, thank you, Jenna, I was going to, uh, s- use the same CDC study. I just, my whole point is, um, you know, when I look at, um, this year, it, there was a lot of challenges this year. And, uh, number one, I think that, um, everyone has stated that our teachers have done, you know, a huge, you know, had a huge challenge, and they rolled with it, and, uh, they did their best with instruction. You know, engaging students when you're trying to, you know, meet with the remote kids and do your classroom is, is really challenging. And so, I appreciate that, um, we have, you know, come up with a system that is, is, is trying to encompass all learners. I still feel that we need to get kids back in school full-time. And when you look at neighboring schools, when you look at Lunandary, who I think is like our twin sister, yes, um, they've had, they've had a hundred and three recovered, um, cases, we've had eighty-nine. So, yes, they've had some more cases, but their students have been in school ninety-six days this year, ninety-six days of full instruction. And so, you know, I can't help but feeling like, you know, for me, when, you know, high-quality instruction and learning for students every single day is part of, you know, what we say it's our goal, what we want to happen, then I feel like we, we really need to look at how to get our kids back in school. And finally, uh, I know Mark mentioned, um, Maggie Melqueen, who wrote an article in August about the, uh, social and emotional health of students. And, um, you know, when I read the article, uh, about the health, in, I actually called her and, uh, wanted to know if she still felt the same way she did in August right now. And, of course, there, you know, things have changed, that was the message, things have changed.
Shannon?
Thank you, um, so, based on our last meeting, as I said, my, the earliest I felt comfortable, based on the information we had, was, was May third. It still seems like the right thing, based on the travel concerns that were expressed, the infrastructure that needs to be established to make those external facilities- The infrastructure that needs to be established to make those external facilities work. Um, I still am uh, curious, so after I finish my comment, I'm interested to know where the tents will be at the middle school. Uh, because that's again where you have a, you know, a, a pavement paradise right around your building, and then your fields are kind of set back, so uh, I'm, I'm wondering how that's gonna work. Um, so, the couple of things I wanted to kind of bring up were, um, I had questions about staff coverage. Um, with the dynamic, uh, we have had the hybrid, um, going to full time. Will it change, um, coverage that we have in the buildings other than standard quarantining, uh, those things that are are more circumstantial? So are we gonna have any staff coverage issues because of the change going from uh, hybrid to uh, no longer having the social distancing guarantees and a full population? So that's my first question.
Well, so I think you'd be good one.
So while we certainly don't have a crystal ball, there will definitely be some quarantine impact. The great part about the clinic is that even our substitutes were eligible to get vaccinated at that clinic. So many are starting to return to substituting in the district that have not worked all school year. So that is very positive, and we are also working to hire additional substitute nurses. We are in progress of, of bringing additional substitute nurses on to have that coverage as well, to help with contact tracing and isolation rooms. So that will be very beneficial, but there, there certainly will be a need for staff to quarantine for multiple reasons, and there may be an impact to staffing, but we are certainly working on that.
Excellent. Um, and just for clarification from one of um, Lori's earlier, you're gonna have trouble finding it. So when she went to the New Hampshire School Boards Association website, she clicked on the COVID, um, the COVID page that they have, and then there were events coming up, and so what she clicked on was a webinar from Wednesday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty one, and that linked you to the operational strategy for K twelve schools through phase mitigation. And she is correct, uh, that um, one of the uh, things that can be considered is the removal of the barriers. So removed recommendation for physical barriers was listed there, but what was failed to be mentioned is the clarified that ventilation is a component of strategies to clean and maintain healthy facilities. And we do not have the ventilation, the ideal ventilation circumstances in a number of our areas of our facilities, which we have discussed extensively at our meetings, because we have on our warrant for uh, two weeks from now a uh, four million dollar warrant article for ventilation. Because the fresh air return in our facilities is not to the standards of a lot of schools in New Hampshire. Because most of our schools, except, with the exception of the middle school, were built in the sixties and seventies. So I think that often we talk about ventilation, but we don't talk about ventilation and what it means for what you're trying to accomplish. So, you know, take, you know, I don't wanna cherry pick, so there are a number of things they talked about, you know, the revising of social distancing from six to three feet. You know, but the ventilation was the second bullet, the third bullet was the recommendation, uh, removed recommendation for physical barriers. Uh, based on the fact that we don't have the ventilation in place, I would hate to think that we would give up those physical barriers. Considering that, um, and then uh, clarified the role of community transmission levels and decision making. And then added guidance on interventions when clusters occur. So those are the five bullets on which she was referencing, uh, from March nineteenth, twenty twenty one. But the biggest one that always weighs on me is ventilation, because although we have done great work in the district, we know that we've also identified areas in the district that don't have ideal ventilation. And it's nothing that we could have controlled, considering that we've never asked to build a s- a suite of new facilities across our town. Um, with the buildings, the, all the elementary schools from the sixties and seventies, and the high school as well, with some additions from the eighties, so. So with that, you know, I think that what you're trying to do is admirable, I think waiting until May third, we're going to be in a much better position. Um, again, with um, all of our staff having those two vaccinations, having um, you know, I, we're definitely gonna be coming out of a vacation week, so we're gonna have to keep a close eye on uh, the travel schedules of our students, but, you know, given what you've been handed, I think having May third be the start date, having those a- additional facilities with tenting, that will, I think, alleviate some of that. That popu- population stress that we were talking about. So, you know, I know that you are going through a lot of planning for that, um, and a lot of it is structural, so Nancy, this is definitely your big season for having to, it seems to be your big season all year this year. For having to find alternative ways to create a classroom environment, so, so I just wanted to give credit, you know, and, and thanks for all the work you brought to the table, knowing what, you know, the leadership at all the buildings needed. Uh, so, so thank you for, you know, for what you're doing there, and the whole team for what you're doing there. Um, so those, those were my comments, um, but coverage is a concern, you know, no one wants to substitute for long term if, if it becomes a thing. And uh, and ventilation is still a concern for our buildings, because they're old compared to others' districts, um, they have a lot more newer buildings in their facility, in their footprints. So those, that's what I have for now, but uh, I'm interested to see where this goes, so, thank you.
Um, any other questions from the board? Okay, I have a few question, oh, Andy, go ahead.
Just a clarifier, so um, Jenna asked the question earlier of Mark whether um, the kids have an option every day, whether they would go in or not. Um, the question I have is, does that mean that if a student currently is um, in a hybrid mode, and is not comfortable going into school because of the increased number that are going in? They could take a current class that they're in as hybrid, essentially as remote by being remote for five days during a week?
Yes.
And that is a s- separate path from the current classes that are taught as the, in the real program?
That's correct.
Yeah, can I elaborate there a second? Just uh, I think that um, I really wanna be careful of language here, we want, don't wanna get too confusing on things, so I'm gonna just take a second to talk about it, so. We're calling it, you know, um, you know, we wanna make sure that we are, we are making sure we're talking about, one is online learning as part of what you're doing during that, the other one is remote learning in our re- remote real program. So a remote classroom being taught is, is a difference than a concurrent learning situation where you choose to be online and learn at home. So I wanna be very clear, there's a difference there between the two programs, that's just like the remote program and the real program is staying intact and fully intact, and those classrooms intact. It is, if someone is in though, like you said, Andy, if they're in a, let's say, English nine right now in a cohort model. And right now, and they think because of the numbers coming in, and the safety, the safety concerns there are, they choose to stay remote five days a week, they can just tune in to the concurrent learning online from home every day.
So that's really important, John, thank you. Uh, Sharon Putney mentioned uh, the protocol that would, that's in place for students who are in the real academy, tho- those students cannot, they are not part of this. If they elect to uh, join, you know, the hybrid model, or to change altogether and to come in full time, there's a process for that, a form that has been online for a long time, and they would, they would have to fill that out and then convert over to that system, and then they could make the daily choices that everybody, you know, else would be making, so John is right to point out the, the difference. Remote academy versus the work at home as part of the hybrid model.
Right, and, and just, just to close my thought, so my only concern is, and the question is, I'm assuming that in some classes, especially like sciences, let's say, or home ec or something like that, sorry, I'm saying home ec, Ron. Consumer science. There may be needs for in-class things to be done periodically, like a lab or whatever, that a hybrid model would be able to accommodate. If a student chooses not to go in, there may be a situation where the curriculum is not built around it being completely remote, is that a possibility? Is that a, a potential risk that we run if a two student decides to go fully remote as part of the cohort model? Did I not explain that correctly?
No, I think people are probably just uh, processing your, your question. So I think what you're asking is, are there, are there some instances where by the nature of the course, um, being in school, um, is kind of more or less necessary? And if you elected not to, would you lose something as a result of electing not to? Is that more or less your question?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna turn to the high school, uh, uh, to address that. I'm, I'm gonna venture a guess that um, that, that happens now, I mean, instruction has been, you know, uh, modified throughout this year, uh, because we currently have situations where students are not in school. And, you know, we've worked really hard to not have them be disadvantaged by that kind of thing, but I turn to Sharon or Peter Rich, or, or any of the principals to, to clarify that a little more.
Yeah, so some of that, um, you know, we, we have some hands-on classes, obviously. Um, Andy, where it's best for the students to be experiencing it, um, hands-on. Um, and they're not in the school, that is, can be problematic. When everyone was out of the school, those staff members were um, often videotaping from the school, doing demonstrations, having videos that the students could review. Somehow, some had alternative, um, assignments for the students to complete, so that they could still feel that they were um, learning within that same content area, but it's, it's not the exact same experience. A few students, we have been able to let come in, um, at times where, um, there weren't as many people in the building to try to, um, maybe complete some of that work without a lot of other students around. But it, it's challenging, um, it's not that their learning is going to end, though. There are alternatives that can be presented to that student, and we try to work with the student. Um, Pete and Rich, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Uh, uh, would happy to. I, I think in all cases, a student that's not in front of the teacher um, is not benefiting as greatly if they're home. Um, and we do the best we can to sort of give them uh, work and, and be visible and participating, but not necessarily doing the same exact work with the hands-on classes. I spoke with a parent last week where she wanted her daughter to come in just for the labs in a science class, and then be home remotely the other days. And, and, and that's again, goes to the choice that Jenna was talking about, um, that, that was perfectly acceptable. So you're absolutely right, um, it's hard to, to recreate a hands-on experience, but we have that flexibility with this model to be able to do, um, both the hands-on work as well as stay home for the ru- uh, concurrent, uh, just the visual exercises and the online extension work.
Okay, and, and thanks, that, that answered my question, because with flexibility comes questions that come up about the, what the flow, if you give choices, there are certain aspects that you assume may happen if you know the kid's gonna be there two days a week, but if they choose to only be in one day a week, how can you accommodate it? And you've given me the answer that I wanna be here, so, thank you.
Thanks, did I see you, Lori?
So I just wanna go back to what Rich just said, and I wanna agree with him, um, you know, when we look at high-quality instruction, there's nothing that's gonna take the place of a teacher in a classroom, engaging students and instructing. So every time we try to divide to, to conquer this, w- we are losing some of the values that, that we have as, as, you know, what are those um, instructional core values that we have, and so I think high-quality instruction is so important, so for me, you know, I really wanna see kids back in the classroom full time, that's what I, I really would like to see.
So I just wanna comment on that, though, we, there's no disagreement here about that for sure. But when we talk about high-quality instruction, we have to, you know, we tried to point out tonight what that means, and we have to recognize the possibility that, um, what could happen and what has happened in other places is that, um, the price that's paid to get students back in school is teachers who are put in front of students who are not qualified to teach that particular course. Um, that's not a criticism of a- of any place, it's, it's, it's the price that's paid, you know. We've said since last March, you know, we can't have our cake and eat it too, we can't, you know, act like this pandemic doesn't have impacts on our abilities to deliver the instruction we want. So what we're trying to say tonight, we wouldn't have, you know, put forth the plan uh, that we did if we didn't think there was a great benefit to having students be in school. But we don't wanna paint a picture that suggests that, you know, it's, it's um, not going to come at a cost, and the cost might be, you know, and again, I'm not predicting it, I couldn't predict anything about this, but I, I think it's important just for a consideration that, um, you know, the realities of school right now call into question the ability to, on a daily basis, deliver that very high quality. What we're able to do now is manage that risk a little better, um, so that when we have students in front of us, we really can, that's what we're trying to maintain. So, I don't think there's any disagreement on any, by anybody here about, about that goal, it's just the reality you know, presents it a little different. Um, and, and so I think just for the experience, for the purposes of the board to deliberate, I just think it's important that we try to be honest about that and not say, oh no, it's, it's gonna be perfect, there's, there's gonna be no problem there, because you're gonna know soon enough that that's not gonna be the case, and then you might wonder, well, why didn't anybody say that to us? So we're just trying to be honest, but we certainly, you know, we wouldn't have put the plan forth if we didn't, you know, think there was benefit in, in doing this.
Um, Bill.
Yeah, you know, I, I just want to, I just, I, I just wanna say that, um, you know, with the emphasis on high-quality instruction, um, we, we just wanna keep in mind that, um, we have, um, a whole cadre of remote educators who have been providing high-quality instruction, who have seen gains in their students' growth, who have, um, you know, I'm in classes daily, and it's amazing what they're doing, and I think this year has been really about what, um, about giving children and giving families what they need. And for some children, families are saying, you know, they, we, they are getting what they need. Um, you know, and, and, um, it's like, uh, in, in, um, you know, in the pursuit of ge- getting all children what they need, I just wouldn't want to lose that, um, you know, that story that, that, um, that many, um, children and families and educators are telling, um, uh, high-quality instruction is happening, um, remotely for, um, for many families.
Thank you, Bill, um, just, I saw Jenna and then Andy.
So I just want to respond kind of to a comment that Lori had just made about, you know, wanting kids to be in school full time. Um, I think we all want, you know, life to go back to normal, and all kids to be back in school full time, but with so many different schools of thought out there around COVID, around vaccines, around everything, the best part of this plan is the flexibility for students and families. Um, teachers are, have been teaching in this dual model of in-person with a remote component. They're used to doing that, they can navigate that, and right now, every parent is dealing with a different nightmare in their own home, right? We're all diff- dealing with a different reality. The reality in my house is a di- yeah, is a different reality than the person next door and the person across the street and a person diagonal. And what's right for one family right now might be, my kid has to go back to school, or we're gonna need like mental health, help, you know? But for other parents, I'm hearing like, please don't disrupt our routine, it will push us right over the ever-loving edge. And there's everything in between and other things I'm not even thinking of, and we're not thinking of. And the best part of this is the choice, even within my own home, I have three different children, I think I possibly could make three different choices, you know, two different choices or whatever. It's, it's just so individual that to allow parents to choose at this juncture, and we have only just this much time left, what is best for their child right now in this runway to the end of the year is to me, the absolute and unequivocal right thing to do, but because it allows anybody who wants their child to be back in full time to do that and thankful for that opportunity, and it allows people who have other circumstances to say, this is not what's best for my child, but parents know what's best for their child, and when you can give them a choice, you should. And I'm very glad about that choice.
Andy?
I was just, I was gonna follow through, I mean, you know, I, I certainly, I certainly wanna give students and parents the opportunity to students and parents the opportunity to allow their child to go back into the buildings as much as we can to take to get that high-quality in-person education. But I think we need to be honest, that as school board members, there is no clear consensus when you hear input from parents. You hear as many parents that want their kids back and are berating us for not having it done all year. And you get the same number that say, please be cautious, we have to be careful. So there's no, there's no consensus here. So when I look at this option, and the reason I'm asking the questions, I am, is because the more we allow parents and students to make their choice and get as best quality as they can bake on based on their choices and decisions, the better off we're gonna be. So that's why I'm asking the questions, like if a parent decides not to send their student, but they're part of the 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 cohort model, what will their experience be like? Cause they need to know, we need to know when we make our decision. So I think that people listening and us as a board and administration need to understand, there is no clear consensus. So the more options that we can give and the best, eh we're we're gonna take a stand at some point during this meeting as a board. There'll be parents that aren't happy about it, but if we can give them a choice so they can have the best experience for their child, given whatever decision it is we made, then that's as good of a job as we can do. So that's why I'm teasing all these things, because that's what we have to do. So.
Uh Lori?
I just had one more question su- too. So when a teacher's quarantined, they're still able to zoom in, right? They still can zoom and run class remotely. Is that correct?
Uh, Rich?
Um, eh we've been fortunate that we've been able to set up some of our permanent subs to be able to go into the classroom and be the eyes and ears adult in the room while the teacher is zooming into that from their quarantine. Um, but there have been cases where we've not been able to fulfill that promise, and we've had to send kids uh to alternative uh placement. Um, and if we had a high rate of quarantining, we would not be able to do that with every teacher. We have done it on occasion. Again, it's gonna be uh contingent on the number of subs um that we have.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Marsha. I I was just gonna say, we just have to make sure that if a teacher is not well, if they're quarantined because they're actually sick. And we we then would put a sub in, but we do the same thing that that Rich had mentioned. We we try to find someone who can ha- have be in that classroom to monitor the students while the teacher is doing the teaching.
Andy?
Just, so I know the next agenda item we're gonna talk about after we go through this is about the travel policy. But if you look at the New Han- the DHHS website, a a student or teacher who has been fully vaccinated past the fourteen days, if they're exposed, do not have to quarantine. So one of the the things that the what we're gonna start running into is more teachers get vaccinated and fully vaccinated. The rules around quarantine are gonna change pretty dramatically around those teachers. So I think it's important that we understand that as we get closer to the May third timeframe, which is a ballpark around when both shots will be in place, it's about that right timeframe. The idea of a teacher needing to quarantine if it is, and the students may have to, you know, cause remember, only sixteen and older. So a whole bunch of the students we're talking about tonight won't even be eligible for a vaccine. So there will still be the normal quarantine that applies to them, but for the older students that choose to get one and for teachers, the quarantine rule, especially by the hit the last six weeks of the school year, will not be the same as they are today. So I think it's important that we also recognize that.
That's true, that's accurate.
Other questions? Okay, I have a few. Um, just some things, uh many of um the questions that I had have been addressed. Um, but I have a few more, and I just wanted to clarify a few things. Did you say that there will be seats assigned at lunchtime as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then um as it relates to the bus disinfecting, are there any changes to that process, or is the same process actually work um for this um proposal?
Yeah, it's gonna be the same process. Did everybody hear me on that one? Okay.
I did, and then um the the um I I wanted to take actually a minute and talk about um K through four. Um, because I think it's relevant to our conversation here. Um as, you know, we've been working on really was been a phase reopening of our schools, we started with K through four. So I'd like to know a little bit about how that has gone. I mean, if there's any lessons learned that have been able to apply, you know, to this propos- that are being applied in this proposal.
I I can begin. Mark, that's okay?
That's fine.
Yeah, um I would say that, you know, some of the, I think um some of the planning around around spacing, what's worked for them, trying to keep kids more assigned in their seats, trying to stay within some of the instructional things we talked about, trying to stay, we can't do some of the the group work we talked about, doing some of the small table work, things like that. That's been the more difficult thing, so that's coming into some of our planning, and we've talked to them about that. Also, the idea of lunches, that grab and grow go option we talked about in there. It seems to be a backlog during lunches where kids seem to migrate a little more, so we're trying to mitigate some of those. Some of our mitigation, uh to your points, and that really has come from some of our experience we're seeing. But these kids are much larger, and so everything we're seeing is amplified a little bit because the closest thing we have is, you know, a fourth-grade classroom. And and I have commented to Mark already, I have to do a few walkthroughs and being in buildings, that even with pulling things out into the trailers that we purchased, there's not a lot of space in there, physically they're getting bigger. Um, our our classrooms at the upper L are very much the same size with larger bodies in them. So some of those, that's some of those factors we're very aware of. And that's some of the reason you saw all those concerns laid out, cause we didn't learn a lot of those bringing back K to four. And we are, some of the staffing issues that you that were just just forementioned around around, what are you doing around when Andy asked a question around when someone's quarantined, doing that, we're facing that. There's only so many bodies to go around. I says before, we got a hundred pieces of the puzzle, and there's so many bodies to go around that when we have multiple people out on quarantine or sick in multiple buildings, we're stretched thin with sta- with 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 subs this year. Thank goodness, vaccines are happening, and we're starting to see some of our uh retired teachers, people who are who are um of that age who are starting to come back now, and that's helping us. So we're seeing that that little bit of relief is gonna help us potentially. So yes to your answer, and those are some things I can think of, but I would ask Dean about what other has it, all the other things that you learned from your colleagues that might help you uh in some of your planning.
So they're uh thinking, I'll just uh jump in and say that, you know, having been around, it's a delight, an absolute joy to see, you know, hallways with kids. It's it's been the happiest highlight of frankly, this last year. And it doesn't come without a cost, so so the joy is obvious. Um, however, there has been recently one school where because of the larger size, we had to quarantine an entire class. You know, you've heard us talk about surgical contact tracing um is much easier to do. It's never easy to do, but it is easier to do when you have fewer people to trace. Um, and when the numbers get larger, it's a little bit harder to, you know, say, alright, Sally, Jimmy, Joey, you know, you have to just be home. It's harder to do that. There comes a time when you say, we can't to a a safe degree, so we have to just quarantine a class. So that's a reality uh that's happened. Um, and then, you know, on occasion, it's worth noting that there have been times when, you know, some folks in a particular community have gotten aggravated at the need to quarantine. And and then they wanna, you know, sometimes they will ask a principal, you know, who is the child? Um, that's a very unfortunate moment, um because we will never reveal that. To be honest, that question should never be asked. Um, and 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 then it begs the question, well, what would you do if you had the answer to that? Um, you know, uh it's no one's fault uh when they get ill, but that's something that we've seen a little bit of an uptick in. Um, so, you know, that's that's the reality. Uh, teachers are doing a wonderful job. They love their children, they love them. Um, and and it's evident. And the joy that we see, it's it's remarkable, it's evident, it's obvious, and it's great. And, you know, there's always a but. And it's not cup half-empty or cup half-full, it's just reality, and, you know, we've been trying to be pretty honest with you about both ends of the spectrum.
Thank you, and you know, you know, now that you mentioned the teachers, you know, I do wanna take a moment while we're having this discussion to thank those K through four teachers. Um, they came back, you know, before they got their first vaccine, and they came back before the rest of the teachers and staff in our district. Um, and of course, thank thank our overall staff as well. But I wanna just take that moment and say, you know, I all I know all of our teachers want to be back with kids. And I know all of our teachers want to be safe, and the same thing with our families. They want kids to be safe and they want to be back in school. So across the board, you know, we're dealing with those challenges, but I can't say thank you enough for um, you know, what everyone has done to get those K through four kids back. Um, it is so appreciated, I can think I can speak for the entire board, it is so appreciated by this board um that work from everyone um that has gone into that. And um to maintain um that as safely as you have um is is great. And I'm excited about phasing in um the other grades as well. Um, you know, so, you know, one of the other things that, you know, I I couldn't agree more with the parent choice. I mean, the comments that, you know, Jenna made, um Andy as well particularly. And I think I think everyone has really touched on that who's spoken from the board tonight. But, you know, to be able to give families this choice right now, you know, everybody is tired, you know, everybody's needs are different. Um, some people have had silver linings, and for some, there's no silver linings. This is really rough and devastating. And um, you know, I think being able to provide options that families can choose, you know, based on their needs, you know, I I know that there's, you know, kids in the district that are even working to help put food on the table for the families. There's a, there's a disparity in a variety of different situations that all of our families are grappling with. And so I think that this um proposal really helps with that, um and I'm excited about this. And, you know, one of the other things too is, you know, as I've been talking to parents and families and um, you know, there's just all sorts of different perspectives, you know, as has been mentioned before. Um, but, you know, to be able, and and one of them is even, well, gosh, you know, why bother, there's, you know, six, eight weeks left to school. You know, let's just call this a wash, let's just, but, you know, my perspective is that this, just how the elementary helped us learn to be able to get to where we have this proposal, going back for even the short amount of time at the end of the year is gonna prepare us for next fall, better prepare us um for the fall where this pandemic is still here. I know there's a lot of hope with vaccines. Um, I was just on a two-day remote conference for work. I'm in um the health IT field, um and I heard leading um speakers from the World Health Organization, Food and Drug um Association, and what they've said is that, you know, we're looking at nine months to twelve months um before we get back to some normalcy. And of course, normalcy does not mean the way things used to be, it means normalcy. And, you know, people are getting vaccinated, some of our older kids are getting vaccinated. Um, I think what they've said is that they expect maybe younger kids to have vaccines available in early twenty twenty-two, maybe we exceed that. And certainly doesn't mean things stay exactly the way they are, you know, we continue to make progress. I mean, we're a lot different situation than um, you know, we were six months ago, and then six months before that, we'll continue to make progress. But we still have to prepare to go back to school in the fall. And um and be able to do the best that we can uh to maximize any learning um that we can do. Um, so even if it's a short period of time at the end of the year, this is very valuable work um that I I think that um it sounds like we may undertake. Um, one other thing that I wanted to talk about was Fridays. So I I'm hearing choices on Fridays and, you know, and so I wanted to talk about what that Friday looks like for our students. And one of, again, with, you know, based on the conversations I've had with parents, one thing I hear a lot of is really wanting either some tutoring support. Um, and so I guess I'd like to say, is is there a way we can put something, I guess, more robust, you know, can we get some, you know, mini rooms that kids can schedule tutoring time with on Fridays? To best maximize, actually, it gives um some of our teachers economy of scales, that they can, you know, man um a room that's, you know, with safe distance and um maybe allow kids to sign up and to go in. Because I think that, you know, when kids get behind during the week, if they have that option that will work for them, it may not work for all, but for some that need it, particularly as we embark on the end of the school year. Um, and, you know, we we embark on towards final grades, you know, to have an organized structure to best utilize those Fridays if we're gonna have them, um to really, you know, help kids, you know, get caught up, you know, some remediation, um just some special support. So I just wanted to throw that out there for thoughts, John?
Uh, thank you, Cindy, you're very similar thoughts than the team, so it's almost like you were in our meeting uh earlier today, and we were talking about this. So I I thank you for raising that question. Um, yeah, um and again, um some of these details will come once we know the when and how of what's going to happen. But I I um, I think the the probably buildings are are uh prepared to talk about a little little bit about this today. So I'm gonna turn to Sharon and kinda um let Sharon kinda start this conversation, and then we'll certainly add to it.
And and John, just before Sharon, could you just, because because it's important to uh uh mention, so can you just speak about what win time means? Uh, I mean, in other in other words, the principals are gonna speak more in detail, but win time is really exactly what Cindy was talking about. So can you just elaborate on that acronym?
It's it's exactly what individuals need, and that's exactly what um our hope is. And I think that it's what kids need. We we every year um get to this time of year, and we have a lot of seniors, especially at the high school that I I really don't wanna talk too much about it because I don't wanna uh talk about what Sharon can in her own, in in her building and Richard Pete. But we have that situation with really seniors needing to make sure they have the credits and things they need to graduate. We wanna focus on on them. We have students um eh with with Heather that I know have um a lot of needs. And um if there's more contact time we can create with scheduling for our students with disabilities that's available, we'll certainly work on that. We have students that, you know, in general, need some enrichment um at our at our at our at our levels, that we're gonna work on aspects of how do we make that happen too. So there's all avenues um that we can explore in using Fridays to how do we give them also time um eh at the high school with their teachers in time with that high school, middle and upper, that maybe they just didn't understand the assignment or need a little more help or a little more support. So those are all part of exactly what win time means, what individuals need. So Sharon, I'll turn to you now.
Yeah, I can start, and then um Rich and Pete jump in as well. Um, some of the Friday um remediation that's occurring um right now with the delayed eight-period day, um the plan would be to bump that to the beginning of the day to provide that early release um to be consistent in the district and then um allow that collaboration time for teachers. Um, what's also going on is some work with skill centers, um students are able to um get some of that help, um not just identified students, um but there's a lot of opportunities for students to um email their teachers, to go to Zoom with their teachers, to go to a skill center, to get some individualized instruction and remediation. Um, we're also talking about um high-ability students um at the middle and high school and trying to um provide some enrichment activities for that population of students. We are meeting on Thursday regarding some of our seniors and to find out um just kind of um assess with the guidance office um how our seniors are doing and to come up with some strategies for those students that are at risk, to make sure that we're providing all of these opportunities. Friday would also be an opportunity um to implement some of that um as well. All of these opportunities, Friday would also be an opportunity um to implement some of that um as well. Um, we're also talking about some transitional um opportunities for students um. As being um part of our our Friday opportunities for intervention, extension. And also I know there are a lot of students that are receiving therapies, um whether it be counseling therapies or also students with. Um, P T O T and speech, um and also working in small groups, so. Um, those are some of the Friday, um what I, what individuals need um opportunities.
Great, thank you, and so what what I'm hearing, I believe, is that you're expecting. That by the time we transition, you will have further plant, you will have further. Clarification, communication, all of that as we get closer to um. You know, bringing these schools back, is is that consistent across all three schools?
Adam, would you like, Adam or Shawna would like to speak to the the middle, your thoughts on on Fridays?
I think um, just to, you know, our thoughts on our thoughts on Fridays are a lot along the lines of of what the high school is talking about. Wanting to continue to provide supports for kids. Um, continue to encourage students to uh come and get extra support, um you know, provide some extension opportunities and. Um, extra learning and and, you know, keep kids engaged in in what's going on and and so. Kind of meet them again, I mean, it's really, I I I think kind of already been said, but the whole idea of of. You know, meeting them where they're at, um, you know, and and I know. Uh, it's. Really, kinda, I think Sharon really kinda put it well of just, you know, it's it's still gotta. Look a little bit the same and a little bit different all at the same time, so. Um, some definitely some some work to do to sort it all out and and make it make it work, but. Definitely want to provide the supports for kids, whatever capacity they can, um, so.
Marsha, Marsha, Nikki, can I jump to you?
We've asked our teachers as we went to concurrent learning when we did the what individual needs. Uh, on Fridays, we've asked our teachers to offer, you know, a support session for each one of the content areas. So it might be anything from, you know, some reteaching of activities to, yes, maybe a project based learning. Activity for kids to extend their learning, but we've asked them to maintain that for all students on Fridays. Some of it might be because they choose to come, the children, some of it might be by invitation from the teacher. Meaning, I need to see you on Friday and I want to go over this with you and I'm going to offer. This reteaching of the math concepts that we worked on this year, so we do um offer that. We will continue to to offer that support to to students in all content areas, as well as our Unified Arts. We've set it up for Unified Arts on a Friday as well, um they're shortened periods, but it's available to all students.
Thank you, thank you very much, Marsha, and I just want to uh, before I turn, I'm gonna turn to Heather too and just I'd like to hear her comment on this too also about kind of what her thoughts are on it. I think it's kind of uh, some of this is uh, why I've said it uh before too. Our relationship with our with our parents and our community has to be very strong right now around this. And it has to be, communication has to be strong on both ways. So if a kid is struggling and needs help, please email a teacher, please do that part to help us do some more of that. I guess guided invitation, we'll call it, um to uh to come in. You know, to say that this time is for you and your slot to be here to do this. And I think that that will be very helpful that we uh, we have that partnership in helping people. And Heather, uh, what are some of your thoughts about Friday and the flexibility?
So, not to be silly or anything, but it's certainly a win-win. Because for students who are exceptional, it offers the opportunity to actually come into the physical building and receive those services which we know. For most students are best delivered live. Additionally, um we've seen an uptick in referrals, I've talked about that before this year. So this is an opportunity to look for those students who are really struggling, like you said, Cindy, who need more. Instruction opportunity for re-instruction, pre and post instruction, so Friday with the option of kids being able to come to school live. Offers just a whole host of opportunity for kids, so that's actually very exciting. To hear about that as well as the opportunity for extensions, so for the kids that we're reaching ahead for. Who may not have had as much opportunity for that this year, I heard some exciting things um from our schools. Over the last week or two about the ideas they had for how they could support kids who are um thriving. And need more opportunity to extend their learning, so I think that's really great, I'd love to go back. Cindy, to the uh, what did we learn from the K four? Um, I have this wonderful opportunity weekly to meet with families and parents. And it's an interesting mix of parents who live fully in the remote world in real. And chose to stay there when they made that choice and their children are in, from their point of view, thriving in that setting. Receiving high quality education, receiving the special education they want or not, because not all the families have students who are exceptional. Additionally, we have at least half of the families are parents who chose to have their kids go back full time, so they had a choice. And both sets of parents in conversations have spoken very highly over the past couple of weeks about. The positive nature of what has happened for their lives, whether it was staying fully remote or coming back full time. So there is something really beautiful about this plan in the sense that. It's a little bit different than the K four because they don't have cameras and they're not concurrent and that age group wouldn't really thrive in that model anyway. But this model allows the real school to remain intact as it is and those families will be very satisfied with that. And for families that are currently hybrid in the concurrent model. The hybrid goes away and they have a choice between either being fully in or concurrent. And on any given day, it could change based on the circumstances and things like that, so I think. From listening to families and I also have, we have a nice range preschool through high school families who attend weekly. It's between sixteen and twenty eight families on any given week, depending on what are the topics or things people are bringing to the table. So you have, you know, a breadth of the community who is excited about. Having either more time in school or the choice to remain fully remote, so anything we can do. To support that, I agree with everything school board members have said about that. And something Andy said about the May third date that I think is important is the opportunity to get everybody inoculated. So or vaccinated so that the quarantining issue can go away because that is an issue in the K four right now. So I've had parents say, hey, you know, uh, my student's parent wasn't there, the speech and language person had to quarantine. And right now, that's a reality and people have rolled with it, people aren't angry, they understand or, you know, classroom is out for ten days. But I do think it is interesting, the idea that is kind of exciting as we're moving forward, that we are moving into a time. That could look significantly different than some of the real challenges we've had over the last several months, keeping our programs intact, so that that is, there is some. I think some great news on the horizon, so it's something to think about with that because if people go back earlier. And people get exposed, they can't get those vaccinations, so that pushes it further into May. Before people have two shots in fourteen days, so just a thought. Thank you.
Yeah, and you know what, while, you know, while I have eh your attention anyways, I want to thank you for the, I think you have like a coffee talk, right? That's you, um, you know, that's one example. Um, I've had, I've heard tons of positive feedback um about your interaction with families and the support you've provided by making yourself available. In that way, and that's one way that we've used technology in a way that we hadn't in the past. In school districts, not just ours, in so many, and I think that's one example when we start to move forward and we think. You know, things can't go back to how they were, you know, we've, we've developed some things, that's something I can see. Even continuing into the.
Oh, we will, yep.
So.
We will.
And not only did you just do it a few times, you've been consistent with it. Um, and so thank you for that, I think that's really been a great benefit too.
Um, thank you. I've learned so much from the families in Merrimack too, I will say that, and they are incredible partners. I weekly bring things to the leadership table from the parent community, whether it's our real families. Or our concurrent families or our fully in families, they have lots of amazing ideas, I mean, the topic right now is transition, obviously. The reopening next year, the same thing you're talking about, Cindy, what are things we can take with us and carry forward that are amazing? So, yeah, we are very fortunate in Merrimack, I I can't thank you enough for this opportunity.
Thank you, okay, I think that that, let me just give a quick check. Oh, there was one other thing I wanted to address, um, and that was. Temperature checks at the door or any kind of a, you know, has that been considered any kind of a, a, you know, a checkpoint? Like, so for example, um, I'll use hockey, um, my, one of my kids plays hockey and, you know, to get in there, you, you know. Um, you use your phone and I know not all students have phones, so it, you know, there would have to be another way, but you can fill out a couple of things. It automatically takes your temperature, or maybe there's a code they can put on the back of their card that they could scan. Um, particularly in the older, in the older grades, um, probably any, you know, any of the grades that we're talking about right now. Um, you know, it may have an opportunity, is is that been discussed as far as monitoring temperatures?
Well, we talked about that, we talked about that early on. And if we were going to be doing temperature checks, it would create a a giant bottleneck when kids would get off buses. Or walkers come in and you'd have to stop, it'd probably take you an hour to get your kids in the building and they'd all be crowded outside. Uh, depending upon how many people would be volunteering to do temperature checks. So there, there should be, you know, rules that parents go by and we left that uh. Actually, we left that task up to the parents to make sure their kids don't have a temperature before sending them off to school. It's nothing that we think that we can do. Um, quickly and efficiently bringing, let's say, twelve hundred kids into a high school.
Yeah, and I think, you know, that rings a bell, I think I remember, um, I also think I remember reading like Mass General. Or, you know, a large hospital in Boston, if I'm not mistaken, may have stopped doing temperature checks because they didn't find them effective. I don't know if any of the nurses can speak to the value.
Maybe they can, yeah.
I can, um, we did talk about it since at the beginning of the year and and we, we, you know, there were, there were a lot of things that went into it, one of them being that. You know, just the the whole general um idea of a partnership with parents and that. We had, we needed them for this to work, right? So they were sent a list of guidelines to go over with their students every single day before they send their school student to the bus stop. Into school, drive them to school bus, whatever, um before they got there and that included, do they have a temperature? It's a, you know, like a mini attestation like our staff does, that we have the expectation that parents should be doing every single day. Before they send their kids in and, you know, often I'll have a kid that'll say, oh, it started right when I woke up this morning, if they have symptoms or. It started last night and we use that as a point of teaching to go back to those parents and say, you know, really, you've really, we. We'd really have to have you asking these questions for real in the morning before they're leaving for school. Um, and we found that if if we were to take temperatures coming in the building, like I said, they've already had contacts on the bus. They've already had contacts um um in the, you know, at their bus stop. Something like that, so there was too many, there was already too many points of contact for it to be really um considered. Effective for us to even consider something like that, so um we 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 did pass that over to the parents to help us with that piece of it.
Okay, thank you, and I also want to make sure that we have a special thanks uh for all of you nurses, because I know that you're working through the weekends. Um, I've had calls from you on the weekends and nearly around the clock, so um all of, I mean, truly. That is amazing work that you've done and a lot of it. Um, and and I just want to acknowledge you all. Okay, those are the end of my questions. Jenna.
So I think we've talked a lot about the plan and I think we've hashed out a lot of different pieces of the plan, there's one thing we haven't talked about that I would like to talk about. And that is the date. Can we talk about the date of the plan, I know that um Andy had talked about it the last meeting when we asked. To come back with a plan, you know, about a possible s- scenario where there would be a rollout, where maybe, you know, five to eight go back first. And then the high school. That's obviously not the proposal here, um, but considering that. You know, this new information from the CDC about um vaccinations having eighty percent efficacy. Although I do understand that doesn't eliminate the quarantine requirement, um if you're between vaccinations, so that is still a reality. Although it's a reality we're dealing with already in K to four, so it's not a new reality, um. I would love to hear from, um, you know, the rest of the board around what are your feelings on the date? Because um, my feelings on the date is I would love to see. Um, definitely a a rollout plan, I would, I would love to see five to eight going back closer to. The beginning of fourth quarter and mid April and then high, if, you know. And then maybe considering high school May third. Um, so does anybody have thoughts on that?
So Jenna, why don't you make a motion to that?
Um, I might, but cannot, can we, I'd love to have a little discussion around it first, I think. But I'm not sure what, I don't know about protocol on that.
I, I mean, you, we can have discussion or make a motion, I mean, that's up to you, but um.
I'd love to hear the discussion first, yeah.
So, so, um, one of the things that I, I, I do like the idea of, um, you know. Helping at-risk kids on Fridays, I do like that, um, I, I would like to see. Um, if possible, I know this is gonna take time, but, you know, um, you know, those red zone kids, right? Those like, uh, Marsha was talking about invitations, you know, and I think, you know, a real organized approach to. Students that um maybe uh for a variety of reasons had attendance problems this year. Or had a number of failing classes that, uh, you know, we start with those kids, you know, like the administration and the teachers. And the counselors get together and we put it together a cohort of kids that will come in for, you know, three or four Fridays and we feel like they're. You know, up and running, we get more kids coming in, so we can start filling those learning gaps, I think we have to do that and and. Also to have the opportunity for students that um want to come into the library and and do research or, you know, I think that's. Um, you know, very valuable, so, um, but I, but I'm with you, I'm with you on. Um, the April twelfth date, you know, eighty percent, you know, our schools got vaccinated, our district got vaccinated. So I'm, I'm supporting.
Other thoughts from the board? Andy?
Can't find the unmute button, so eh this is, I I came in to the meeting. Definitely along the lines that I would like to at least see five to six back before the break. High school back after the break and middle school I was on the fence on, that's what I walked in on. Uh, well, walked in with a a sort of a pre idea, um, one of the things that I guess I'd like to find out is if we as a board. Decided to, for example, move five and six and potentially middle school. Um, in in two weeks or the middle of April or whatever date that we decide. Would the infrastructure pieces for the the overflow, for the tents and the the wiring be made avail, is it possible to have those in place? For those levels and not at the high school, I mean, could it be phased during that period of time, is that a feasible thing to do? Because I think part of the reason that this works is because you're building in the concept of overflow. Um, for situations where you may need it, right, so I guess I'm looking to see whether it's feasible to do a rollout the way that uh Lori and Jenna had talked.
Well, the the tents as far as overflow area, um, we are. The owner of the company came down, did a walkthrough, he has the materials, it's just a matter of schedule and setting up a a contract right now. So, I believe it can get done by by April twelfth. Um, as far as, you know, the transportation and bringing back, you know, just seven and eight. And not nine through twelve, you're still gonna have high school kids mixing with middle school kids. And the runs are gonna be townwide, um, not the A schedule, the B schedule, just the townwide run. So that's, that's something else to consider, but that, that's something that can be worked out, but to answer your, your initial question. And then Nancy can can pipe in on uh everything else, because she needs to know the exact location of these tents and I think we just went through that today. So, this would be news to to her, but the April twelfth to get the tents in, I'm, I'm fair, I'm fairly confident. That gives us a a goodly amount of time in my. A goodly amount of time. And mine you, uh, although, you know, the, the fire department has been very cooperative with us. Contacting them right away because anything we do to our facilities, we have to have fire depart, fire department approval. And so they're willing to work with us in a very fast track fashion on, on getting this done and being there when we need it. So. I'm kind of confident on the tents. Nancy has to answer to the tech. Hi Nancy.
We would do the same thing. We would phase in if we needed to, but honestly, if we're adding wireless, it would probably be one project and we do it all at once.
With all, yeah.
Unless we could do like a few buildings early, we would just prioritize it that way.
Yeah.
Um. From an administrative, an administration standpoint, um, you know, I said five to eight, but, um, does it? I mean, and I would love that, but should we be lumping for, like I just heard you say something about the buses and now that reminds me that, you know. Middle school and the high school run on a bus schedule. Should the middle school be lumped with the high school as opposed to the elementary school? The upper elementary school? Thoughts on that?
You mean if we're going to start off with five and six, start that off?
If we did like, yeah, if we did a rollout plan and we did say, hey, let's do.
Then we're gonna go like to phase three because of transportation and everything like that. Transportation would go back to. You know, kind of last year's bus schedules with some modification. And to lump seven and eight together because they're gonna be riding the bus anyway at some point in time, A schedule or B schedule. You know, doesn't make sense to, to put them together as, uh, you know, your final phase, your, your phase three. Let's call it. That, I guess that's the question.
So I, I get, just to clarify that. So instead of treating the buildings as individual entities. We would, I think what I heard Jenna say is if we did five and six sooner. They would be able to take advantage of the buses that are already running for elementary, I'm assuming. And if we move seven and eight with the high school on May third. Then it would, you would just make one change for the buses because they all run on the same schedule as well.
Correct.
So there's only, there would be two phases there, not three essentially.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lori.
So I just, I just want to say that, you know. I think we need to get kids back in school. So seven and eight, why would we wait? That's, we're giving them two less weeks.
It looks like a campaign slogan almost.
You know, so, so I really, you know, we put kids first. So it's, you know, like, so I know like Matt, you know, probably has, you know. My grand headaches after board meetings, but you know, when we're making our decisions, it's gotta be what's best for kids and, and. Every single time, what's best for kids? That's, that's the decision that we make. What's best for kids?
I'm with you a hundred percent Lori and, and quite frankly, I just wanted to ask the bus thing because I wasn't sure if I was creating a nightmare. Because my kids really don't take the bus, so I don't, I don't really know how it works.
So I just wanna, I just have to comment on that. I, I couldn't agree more. What's best for kids? I think there's. Uh, perhaps a difference of opinion about the answer to that question, but I, I just, I don't want to, it, there's a. Something in that makes it sound like there are some people who are in it for what's best for kids and others who aren't. I mean, we're all in it, what's best for kids, you know? There might be a difference of opinion about what that means, but you know, there isn't anybody on the screen. Who isn't working, you know, as hard as they can to try to figure out what's best for kids. So. I just, I want to be clear that, I mean, our proposal is what it is because that's what we've concluded is what's best for kids. Um, and it may well be that others disagree and that's the board's prerogative and we will do what the board directs us always, but. I just want to be clear, we're not, there aren't different sides on the issue of what is best for kids.
I see Shauna's hand.
I was gonna say I agree with that.
Um, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
I was gonna say I totally agree with that. I'm not, I'm just saying, though, when, when Jenna was trying to decide about busing or no busing. For me, it would be, well, if we want to bring kids back, then that was my point.
Right, Shauna.
Um, I, I just wanted to say, you know, the teachers in this district, they're gonna rise to the occasion. No matter what we put on their plate, they do. However, many of them are hearing about this for the first time tuning in tonight. And we haven't even had an opportunity to meet with our staff, uh, depending on what decision is made tonight. And we want to do what's best for kids and what's best for kids is giving the teachers time to plan, especially if it's going to be a day-to-day daily choice. That is going to have to shift, um, their way of doing things a little bit, planning materials and, um, thinking about the spacing and assigning seats. And make, and the biggest part is how are we going to welcome the kids back? The social emotional part and our SOCal's committee has been talking about that and that, there's gonna be some kids. That walk into the building with anxiety. There's gonna be kids that have coming into the, that have been in a, in one of the cohorts. That are going to see additional kids. There's going to be the whole culture building. That we have to think about because we are creating, it's gonna be the first day of school for a lot of these kids if they come in mixed together. And so. If we, April twelfth, that's a short time. Um, it's a plan for what are we gonna do to welcome these kids back, to make it an inviting atmosphere? And to make everybody feel good about this, the best of their ability.
Uh, Nicole.
You, um, I agree with Shauna. Um, our teachers. Our teachers want, obviously want our children to come back in a safe environment, but have not up until this board meeting. Um, have any idea of when this may happen and, um, we don't have any time allotted for them to. Do planning for this. Uh, this is another change for them. Um, they have to have systems. How do I account for attendance? How do I look forward to my teaching and plan when I don't know if there are gonna be five kids in my classroom or twenty kids in my classroom, um, day to day? And so. There is a new learning curve for them. Um. I think one of the things that we've learned, um, from the elementary is how important it is to reset that culture for the kids. And really to take the time, um, I would love for some of our teachers to have an opportunity to talk to some of the elementary school teachers. The twelfth is less than two weeks and they come back to school on Wednesday. Um, and then they, they will be, you know, the, their minds will already be reeling and, and we know we, we've got superstars. Uh, I just want this to be like the best restart ever for the kids and really want to give teachers the time for, um. To, to be able to do all of the things that are right. Uh, there's tons of questions that we have. Marsha and I say to each other every day. What don't we know? What do we have to think about? And one of the things we were talking about today is wouldn't it be great if we could have some time? Um, to meet with some of the other groups. Uh. Lori, I loved your idea about perhaps thinking about Fridays. Um, you know, that, uh, that is a way that I could see us starting to infuse some of, um. Some of that new learning and really try it out and figure out like, how is that going to look before we bring all the kids back and then have that win? So, um. That's what I'm thinking about from the elementary perspective. Also, one other thing John talked about is just, uh, infrastructure. We really do want to try to, um, do the best that we can to make our spaces, um, as socially distanced as possible. That's gonna require, um, rethinking of, uh, re, replanning of the classroom space, thinking about, do we take out kidney tables? Do we restructure the classroom? Do we move these libraries out? Um, and that's, that's all just work and planning. So. I just want to make sure that, that we're giving the teachers an, enough time to do this, um, to do this well, to welcome the kids back in.
Jenna.
So I appreciate that, that perspective so much and, um. You know, uh, Mrs. Demore and Dr. Rowe, I, I really so highly respect you, um. And both, and you've both been incredible in the roles that I've seen you in and I've had the opportunity to watch you for years, do your thing and. And I really just have the highest respect for you. But. I will, I do want to say that I, there's two Flex Fridays in between now and then, and I, I don't want to say that, you know. I know I teach. I know I have a flex day on Wednesdays and I know I come in with a plan. But I also know that there, there is time within those days that can get that done. And I, I don't. I don't think that we should put this off. I, if we can get kids in before April vacation, if that's a possibility. I do believe we can do it and do it well with some Flex Friday planning time, plan Zooms to talk with the people at the elementary schools. Um, to find ways to welcome the kids back well. Um, you know, I know that it's, it's asking for something. But to be honest with you, I think we missed the boat in putting fifth and sixth grade. We talk all the time about the fact that, that the upper elementary school functions on an elementary school model, that they are an elementary school, that they are in cohorts like the elementary school. And I think we missed the boat and I think they should have been in with K to four. And they should have gone back when K to four went back. And we have the opportunity now to. To try to get them in sooner. And, um, you know, I would like to see that personally.
If I, I just wanna, I just wanna speak to that for a minute. Um. The, I, I want it to be very clear because I don't want it to give anybody the impression that we can't do whatever the board asks. So we have, um, what we're talking about here is the difference between. Um, planning and optimizing, right? We've been planning. For weeks since the board asked us to have this meeting, we've been planning and even before then. Because we've known for a long time, even though the current plan is the plan that we presented to the, to the board. Because it asked for more contact time, so we, we gave you, you know. With the concurrent model exactly what, you know, we delivered what you asked for. And we have known that it has been on the board's mind for a long time to move in this direction. So I don't give anybody the impression, like someone mentioned tonight, you know, we haven't been planning or pivoting. That's all we've been doing is planning and pivoting. Um, and so we are absolutely ready to go. The, the thing that I think, uh, Shauna and Nikki mentioned tonight has to do with optimizing that. And we haven't wanted to get in front of the board. And, you know, give details to the community, uh, to our, to our teachers before the board even got a chance to deliberate. That's not the proper. Uh, protocol. So, um, so it's not a question of are we not ready? The question is can we be, can we maximize our readiness? I think that's what I'm feeling tonight. And I would just say in response to the missing the boat, I, I, I would. I wouldn't agree with that. I mean, the principal and the assistant principal and the nurse. Were not excluded from the conversation about that plan of five through twelve. And I think we should really listen to what those people who walk this walk and talk this talk every day. Had said that was, that was their recommendation and then our collective recommendation. So I, it's a, it's a strange thing to say miss the boat when the people who run, who are steering the ship. Are making that recommendation. So, um, you know, uh, it may be that's the case, but. There were reasons that we made that decision. Those reasons haven't changed. Um, we've articulated them before, um, the nature of the upper elementary school size of students, the nature of the developmental stage. The physical structure of the, the building, the way that the building operates is, um. Is, is different. I mean, so yes, it runs more like an elementary than a middle school. But there are significant differences as well and those differences factored into the plan. So if, you know, it, it may be. You know, that that wasn't the best idea, but it, it wasn't, you know, we threw a dart and decided, I mean, we, that was planful. I guess is, is what I'd say. So, um. Neither here nor there. I just, I don't want to give the impression that, you know, that the people who run that ship didn't weigh in and, and. Have a position on it, which they expressed in the plan that was presented.
Well, I, I'll rephrase that, that I would say I have a personal regret that I didn't push for fifth and sixth. To be included in K to four because looking back, I, I didn't fully realize that they were fully self-contained and I wish that. I had advocated for that at that time. And I, that is what's driving sort of my motivation to get five to eight in sooner now. So.
All on that. I saw Marsha's hand and then Lori.
I just wanted to reiterate what Mark had said, you know, we, we very purposely thought about that. We do run, you know, sort of an in-between model. Uh, because of safety reasons this year, we haven't done some of our, you know, mixing of cohorts and moving kids around to. Different teachers, which we typically do, but our kids are larger in size. Our class hu, sizes are, are larger. So to meet what the systems have been or what the recommendations have been in the past for social distancing for kids. We're, we just can't meet that. So. We felt that we went with, I guess, the safety is what we were thinking was, was really important for students. Um, now we have some new guidelines on the nineteenth of, uh, March. Um, we're removing barriers. To have, uh, we know we've come down in, and instead of maybe six feet in some situations, three feet, things have changed. We're, we're in a better position now because of recommendations, but at the time we made that decision. It, it wasn't a, just a, yeah, just a pick a date. It was something that we talked about and we discussed. Because we do have a unique population. They are very much in their developmental stage like a middle school student. As opposed to an elementary and then by size they are as well. So. Just wanted to state that.
Lori?
I just wanted to, um, thank Mark for clarifying, um, the planning piece because. Um, we, you know, we've had a lot of school board meetings and, um. We've talked about planning and planning and planning. And so, I mean, I think sometimes we, we've overplanned, like we, we planned so much and so. Um, I know that the district has, um, you know, been very flexible and, and has planned a lot. So I, I understood what. Um, you know, everyone was getting to, but I, I do think that there's just been a lot of planning and I think people. Um, you know, we're professionals, so you know, um. The board is gonna make a decision and, and people are going to, um, rise to the occasion like Marsha said and. We're, we're gonna get it done. So I think, um, I'm wondering if Jenna wants to make a motion or does she want me to make a motion?
No, I, I definitely want to make a motion. Um, I, I would like to make a motion for, um. To accept the plan as proposed with an adjustment for the date for grades five through eight. Um, to begin starting Monday, April twelfth instead, which I do believe is the first day of the fourth quarter. With the, with the high school, with the high school then starting May third.
My second.
Discussion. Andy?
So as I was sitting here thinking about this and thinking about the planning that was needed. Whether the students are back two weeks or one week before April break, what I'm, what I'm wondering is. Is from administration's standpoint, if we instead of did April twelfth, if we did April nineteenth and brought the. Um, the students back for that one week before the break. Would that allow for a better reception experience of the students with that extra week or would a one week make not a difference?
So I, I think, uh, any amount of time will make a difference in terms of. Uh, better planning for the things that got mentioned tonight, particularly by Nikki and Shauna, but by everybody. Um, I will say that when we presented originally the, uh, there was a conversation about starting, uh. Our students back, um, right before February break and that was not particularly well received. Because it was, you know, a stop and a start, uh, or a, a start and a stop. And so I, I, again, uh, I just would remind people that that, that was a point of some. This discord, um, before when it came to starting just before February break. So. I, I, I don't know that it would be that different for some, uh, when it relates to just before April break. Um, nevertheless, to answer your question, any amount of extra time will be better than not from our perspective. Uh, Adam, did you wanna?
I would, I would definitely echo that, that sentiment, Mark, that, um. You know, if, uh, a, a week of extra time in order to, I guess, better prepare for welcoming back. Um, preparing in, in, in multiple different ways, you know, as far as the social emotional component for our students and being welcoming and. Uh, and at the same time, helping them transition would be very valuable.
Lori?
So how many days when we are going to open school in September, how many days do teachers have to prepare to open school?
I can answer. I'll start that. We, we, we plan, we start planning in June for that opening. I mean, so I think that.
Teachers, teach.
They come in the summer. I mean, last year, for anything with our task forces, Matt talked about the number of hours that we put in. To prep ourselves to be able to do what we did this year. So, um.
On a normal year, so.
We do, we have, we have meetings going.
You have professional development for how many days for teachers, that's the question.
So I think, okay, so I I understand what you're asking now, I I was not, I I wasn't clear. There's a difference, Lori, between the contractual time and then what really happens. So the contractual time is a week, uh, so just trying to get this straight, like a week before school, so. If um, so we have August Academy. That happens the week before students come back, so that's professional development. Um, for typically has been for the last ne- ne- several years for three days. Then, uh, so the first day of that week is contractual time that a teacher has to just be in his or her room. You know, by themselves, we don't even talk to them or call them or anything, they get to be in their room. Then typically what's happened is then we have three days of professional development. And then on the last day of that week, um then uh there are meetings and. S- you know, staff meetings and 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 special educators get together with paras and, you know, and just all kinds of things like that. So contractually, that's that's the answer. Um, the, so I now I understand what you're asking. The reality is that teachers come in. Um, you know, throughout the summer and certainly uh come August, I think every principal would say. Uh that there are more teachers in the building than not. Um, for all that kind of uh planning, but to answer your question, contractually, uh that that's it. Sorry, I just didn't understand what you're asking.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, I wasn't aware of, I wasn't aware of the question either, what you were asking me.
Well, there's a, I'd I'd like to also to interject really quick. When teachers are preparing in the summer, they're not actively teaching. They're preparing, they're getting themselves ready. We're talking about. A staff that is in the middle of trying to teach students every day. And in the middle of this, trying to find the time to plan to adapt and convert. So that's the reason that I asked about the extra week, because even though it only gives another week before the break. Um, I wanna make sure that the teachers are ready for to receive this, to do this, I mean, ye- yes, I want students back as soon as, I want them back tomorrow. But I also wanna make sure that they go back to an environment that's organized, the teachers understand how they're gonna keep the kids safe, that they can bring the kids back. And that the parents understand what the protocols and what the methodology is, the communication of what it's gonna do, this this is. Not something I think we can turn on a dime necessarily, even though I'd love to do it, right, so that's the reason I'm saying it.
So I would, uh I appreciate Andy, you know, again, that you said that, that's appropriate, I would also. You know, one thing we haven't talked about tonight is um. The the amount of effort that um. Uh teachers have put into uh learning this other system for concurrent learning. Uh that has been a steep learning curve. And uh and and again, I wanna point out, this is, I I, you know, we all very much care about teachers, but. This all relates to, you know, when a teacher is is. You know, in a good place than the students that they serve are, that was pointed out a little while ago, so. Um, the teachers understood that the VDO three sixty cameras. Which were brought in as a tool to create the possibility for concurrent learning while maintaining safety. Um, that was, that was a big deal. And and like other things that have happened, there was not a a lot of time for that. Because, you know, we had to buy the cameras quick before December thirtieth. Uh, and then we had to, you know, basically, you know, wait and get them, get them set up and and all this stuff. While the semester is going after the holiday, you know, while. Uh, students are coming and going quarantine and themselves and, you know, and all of that. Um, and so, uh, I think we can't underestimate to the point you made, that. Profound learning curve, which they willingly undertook because it was in the best interest of students. So I think that that to add to what you just said. While they are teaching, so in the summer, you're right, they don't have that responsibility, but they plan. So now they're planning for yet another pivot and they're teaching and they are continuing to learn willingly. Um, a, you know, a particularly challenging system of the camera work. So that we make sure that uh students who are working at home and working live, you know, can get equal attention and and so on. So, you know, that's just another factor, again, we're not telling you we can't do anything you ask us to do, we will. But it's just important to be real about what the challenge is and. And I like very much how Shauna said a few minutes ago that, you know, if our goal is to prepare students well. You know, it it stands that we prepare teachers well, um and the impact is direct, so.
Sh- uh, so Shannon and then Jenna.
Thank you, uh, so I honestly am in support of keeping a consistent date instead of rolling out. And I think a couple of things that were brought up tonight bring that to light. Uh, the first is about uh when we are exposing our teachers and making them quarantine, we could actually be dragging this out further. Um, if we get put in that position, I was, it was maybe Stephanie that said that. Um, so on that note. Those are the things that I'm considering is, what's gonna be the most, this, the least disruptive. Return to the classroom, and I think that's was purposely put it at May third for those reasons. You know, I think I discussed at our last meeting and looking at the calendar and and doing the math and saying. That May third made sense for these reasons, so again, when they are vaccinated and with that um. Period after the uh last shot, which happens to be our spring break, they're gonna come back and they're going to be considered. You know, protected from the virus, which means, again, we're not going to have to deal with the same quarantining standards. So the most that we can do to have consistency, maximize that effectiveness of the vaccinations. And give more planful time to turn the um. Turn the dynamic, I think it's going to be helpful, cuz again, I it's fluid, I mean, it's what they're going to be doing is, if a student comes in. Two days, three days, four days, five days a week, they have to be ready for whoever who shows up and who is there remotely. And manage that dynamic and that dynamic could be majority remote or majority in class and they will not know until they get there. It's not like they're gonna make an appointment to work from home tomorrow, necessarily, um or they're gonna make an appointment to come to school tomorrow, they're gonna be ready for anything. I think that's important. So give them the time to be able to strategize that. And I think that May third gives that time, and I think that's, it's probably given to us for that reason amongst others. So I'm more inclined to say, May third. Uh, the plan as presented uh for grades bu- five through twelve holis- um as as one whole, so. But those are, those are the reasoning, I, we're gonna have quarantines if we don't, and I don't think that's doing the students favors either.
Did I see Jenna?
Yeah, um. I missed, oh, my mic is on, um. So. Uh. I have something to say, but actually feel really uncomfortable saying it, but I'm gonna say it anyways. Um, so I am teaching, I am currently teaching. I am currently teaching in person with remote kids. Please help me understand what I'm missing, because I'm not trying to be a jerk, I love teachers. Um, like, you guys all walk on water for me. You have been amazing administrators, and to stand in in opposition to your recommendations is really difficult for me, but. I, I legitimately do not understand what takes so long to plan. Because if if I had to bring the rest of my remote kids into my classroom, I would have to figure out where they would sit, absolutely, no doubt. It would take me a day, I'd have to figure out where they, where they're, we're gonna put everybody, I've moved furniture around, that that takes some time, for sure. But in the model that everybody's using, the lessons are the lessons, but you're teaching concurrently right now, you're you're doing a lesson, yes, half of the kids may or may not be there. But half of the people are, you know. Are are remote or in person, but you're teaching the same lesson. Right, so you're doing that already. You know, um. There definitely has to be some lead in to, with a week of school, you have to say to the kids, okay. Next week, we're all gonna be together, here's how things are gonna look differently, you have to take some time with the kids to do that. And you definitely have to take some time to do all, plan the rah rah stuff, but you're not planning the Olympics. I mean, you're planning to bring these kids back and it. Honestly, getting them back two weeks sooner is better than. Is the best thing for the social emo- emotional and the mental health of everything, and. They, they don't need so much of a big welcome back, I think we, you know. And again, I'm saying this because I'm with kids every day, I'm with kindergartners who like, if anybody needs the lead up, they do, right? And it really is like, I I I don't understand it, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but I don't understand it. And so, what I will say is, I I'm, I'm s- I'm one hu- I I feel very strongly that we should try to get these kids in. With more than one week before April vacation, that week before April vacation is like the worst. When you're a teacher, it's the worst, like give them a week before that, let's give them two weeks of consistency, and then. You know, and then we can bring our high school back and and we can end the year strong and um. I'm not trying to be a jerk, but I I I have to say, I don't understand the need for more time and more planning, and that's why I feel strongly about. Making the motion the way I did.
So may I just uh speak to that?
Mark and then Lori, yeah.
So, um, I think that. The lesson here is, everybody is right to feel however they feel, I don't think you're, certainly, I don't think you're being a jerk, and I don't. Being difficult, I think you have a right to your perspective. What I wanna say is, I don't wanna get too hung up on the pla- the planning piece. Um, but let's stay with that for a minute. What doesn't get talked about very much, and in fact, you know, oftentimes when there are people who, you know, who call in or or write or email. You know. It's it's a perspective that that would suggest that, you know, things are just terrible. Um. What I would say to you is that. The thing we don't talk a lot about is how much Meramec works to try to to bring excellence. Now, there might be a lot of people listening tonight saying, good lord, you have failed on that. And I'm sure that we have for some, but we don't spend nearly enough time at these meetings talking about. The excellence that we deliver. Or the efforts to achieve excellence, so the only thing I would say about the planning is. Um, we are trying to deliver an excellent product. And excellent products really happen when people have proper time to plan. So what we have resisted this whole time, since last year, is just slapping something together. From my vantage point as a superintendent, it would have been much easier to do that a long time ago. It really, really would have. But I don't think that me or anybody in our team. Felt like we wanted just in the midst of a catastrophe like COVID has been for education. That we were gonna slap things together and just kinda make it work. We've tried to do better than that, so all I would say about the planning is is perhaps we're guilty of trying too hard. To, you know, keep it as good as we can make it, we really are trying to do that. Um, but I would say that the larger issue for the May third recommendation. Um, has to do with what I think we believe are very likely consequences. Of disrupting education. That's really the point for me, is the potential for disruption. That could come when we increase the number of students. And by disruption, I mean, um, having to quarantine more students. Who we're just getting into a flow and then they have to now go back again. One of the things we've heard a lot consistently from families is, you know, and the nurses can tell you this, that's not a happy phone call. Why would it be? You gotta stay home again. Um, and I think we worry very much that the likelihood of that increasing is great. Um, and the impact on uh our ability to, you know, limit the uh. Up the damage to operations is great. Uh, when we could, you know, ha- uh have teachers, you know, out. Uh, you know, we've seen districts that have had to close uh for a day or so, because they've had teachers that have been experiencing. Um, uh, uh vaccination effects and and so, you know. We're, we're trying to avoid those things, so the, it's a, it's it's a wonderful thing to rally around, get students back. And all we're trying to tell you is that the devil is in the details, and as long as. The board frankly will be able to support us, you know, when we have to quarantine. People and then they all, you know, frustrated, I mean, you know, we're trying to say tonight, that's something to consider. We are not telling you that we can't, we are not ready for it. We're not telling you that we can't go on a dime. But what we are telling you is that there might be a fairly significant price to pay for doing that, in terms of the. Particular thing that you're all looking for, which is flow. And consistency. And that we don't wanna do it, you know, have fate, we really are trying to do this well, so. When you say, can we, you know, uh we, you know, if you're gonna offer a little more time, we'll take it, because we use it. Uh, to do the best job we can, that's, that's the most honest way I can, but I don't think you're being difficult or. Or anything like that, I think there are real concerns, but that's how I would respond to your concern.
Thank you Heather.
I, of course, as you know, am a proponent of bringing kids in who need to be in school, because that's the only way they can learn. Or they need to access more instruction, having said that, I I wanna just bring attention to one group that we haven't talked about tonight. And those are families who, and and this comes from the lessons from the K four. So, leading up to the big transition in the K to four program, the real. Remote academy was challenged significantly, there were families that their educational system was disrupted. Teachers were changed, there was very, very distraught families and children and educators and parent educators. Um, who had a very functional system working, people were thriving, people were satisfied with it. And in order to open the K four school, which was really important, I'm not dismissing that, it really impacted significantly. Some families in Meramec, making this decision is going to impact some families. Because when you look at it on the surface, and I'm a huge believer in choice, and figuring out what's the just right thing for each family. The pr- the group of parents we haven't talked about, the group of families that we haven't talked about are the families who chose the hybrid concurrent. Because they felt it was safe enough with the six foot distance to bring their children to school. And those families now are going to be having to make a choice between. Do I allow my child to mix across cohorts? To, you know, the system that's been in place that we've all talked about and people put together, and Mark's not wrong, we, you could do something tomorrow if you wanted to. However, those families are hearing this for the first time tonight, are gonna be thinking about this, like now wait a minute. I felt that that was a reasonable choice, and my child was getting two days of in-school instruction. And had access to teachers on the other days through the concurrent model, and they were very satisfied, there are a lot of satisfied families with that system. There are also a a number, a large number of families, obviously, who would love to jump at the all-in, I want my kid all-in. I wanna just remind us, because we, this is a, this is a big moment here, that there is a group of people who are impacted. Who are not gonna be excited by the news that you can't do six feet distancing anymore, right? That things are gonna look really different from what they chose, and what sounds reasonable on the surface is, well, they can still stay in their A days. Or their B days, but the truth of the matter is, you've heard from all the people here tonight, they can't guarantee. The kind of tracing that was happening, they can't guarantee to know who who was where, when, cuz on any given day, as Shannon said. Any kid can come to school, which is a really great idea. But I think that offering families, and again, whether it's a week, two weeks or not at all. You have another set of families who are gonna have the same level of disruption and tough choice-making. That we had when we op- when we did the K four, that is absolutely going to happen in Meramec in the next week or two. So, I don't know whether those families will choose to stay concurrent, where their kids don't even come into the school at all, so they don't even come those two days. But I do wanna bring that voice. But I do wanna bring that voice to the table because I spend a lot of time trying to make sure we have all the voices. And whether that's a week from now, two weeks from now, or right after break. That is a group of people we haven't talked about tonight who are going to be really challenged by these decisions we're making. So I just wanna put that out there.
Lauren, great point Heather, thank you.
Madam Chairman, I would like to call the question.
Am I, I just have to say my, my words. I just need to say my words first, cause I haven't spoken to how, what I think about the motion. I've been kinda waiting for everyone and then I'm happy with calling the question. Um, this particular question um, is very challenging. And for me personally, um, I know we all want kids back in school. And what I'm struggling with quite honestly is um, two things. Um, one is, um, I think it's fair to give a two-week. Heads up to our families and our staff um, for a significant change. So I am more likely personally to support the nineteenth. What makes this particular decision challenging is also how close we are to getting vaccines for our teachers. Um, you know, that, I know that there is a certain degree of protection that they have and we know that some of our teachers are already in school, but it's still a factor. Um, the other piece is spring break. You know, if spring break wasn't here, it would, it would just, it's right in the middle of. Some of the timing for me. So it's, all of those things together are just um, conflicting for me. You know, and this, you know, this is, I guess what I, what I'm saying is I would feel more supportive of the motion if it were a week later. Um, I would feel more supportive of the motion if it were five or six in the middle school and high school. On the, I definitely want kids back um, after break. Um, so that's what I'm really grappling with is the details around the date and the combined efforts. And so I'm, I'm struggling with, you know, how I wanna vote.
So, so there's a question on the floor and there's a motion on the floor, so we need to vote on that motion.
Okay.
Can we just restate the motion, just to make sure we're clear on what we're voting?
That would be me, right? Is that me restating the motion?
Whoever stated the motion, restate it again, just real quick.
Um, so I move that we um, accept the proposal as proposed. With the exception of the date, the date for, it would be for fifth, eighth grade to go back on April twelfth. And ninth through twelfth grade to go back on May third. That was my motion. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed. At three, the motion fails two-three-zero. Shannon.
I'd like to make a motion that we uh, accept the proposal as presented with a return to school for grades five to twelve on May third.
Do I have a second? No second. Andy.
I'd like to make a different motion, since we're throwing these out here. I'd like to move, I'd like to move that we bring fifth and sixth grade back on April nineteenth and grades eight through twelve back on May third.
Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Okay.
And I'll speak to it really quick. You know, so given especially, I mean, what Heather stated has been in the back of my mind all the time because my fear is always. We're, we're certainly doing the right thing by allowing the students that wanna go back full-time to go back as much as they can. Absolutely correct. But there are parents that are gonna be affected by this in the opposite direction. Remember I said that we hear from students and parents on both sides of the, the fence here? And we have to be pragmatic about giving them enough time. But also leveraging some of our experience in the elementary and uh, could we do it on the twelfth with the elementary? Maybe, but that's only two weeks and three days if we do it on the twelfth. And, and it's still not a hundred percent clear whether we'd have everything in place structurally wise. I know it's only a week before the, 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 the break. However, it's a week and it gets the fifth and sixth graders used to it because I think they'll have a harder transition than the higher grades. So in my mind, that compromise of bringing them back on the nineteenth. Is that the date? Yes, the nineteenth. Um, for a week, fifth and sixth, to allow that transition to happen. To allow the parents of those two grades to grapple with the changes. And then make the change for the rest of them. So we get the buses all lined up. To me is a good middle of the road approach. So that's the reason I made the motion.
I just wanted to make a correction though. The twelfth was one week and three days, I think. In the nineteenth is two weeks and three days. So I just wanted to, I think you said the twelfth was two weeks and.
No, it's actually two weeks. Today, tomorrow, today is the thirty-first, so it's.
Oh yeah, sorry.
Well, no, no, you're right. Oh Jesus.
You're both wrong, actually.
Yeah, it is, it is ten thirty-five, so it's.
One week and a half essentially.
Thank you.
I was going, one week and three.
So, uh, so the, the, the bottom line is we give parents and the staff two full weeks. And the administration for infrastructure, two weeks to get everything lined up so we can make a change for the first two grades. Where I think transition earlier is probably more, better, I think, cause we've got experience with K through four. But that's my motion. So regardless of the time, the nineteenth as opposed to the twelfth. For the fifth and sixth.
All those in, any other discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Two, the motion carries three-two-zero. Okay. Moving on to item number six. Oh, I'm sorry, item number five, which is the discussion concerning the travel policy.
So I'm gonna turn to Melissa in just a minute, uh, because she's been working with um. Uh, the nurses who've been working with DHHS and uh, and also she's been talking to our attorney and so on. But I'll just set the stage. So what the board has in, uh, in front of it tonight are uh, three documents. Uh, the first document is what the current policy is that's in place now. Uh, that was revised on March fifteenth. Um, then uh, when on March fifteenth, uh, when we met. Uh, we shared with the, uh, rather the board shared that it had hoped. Uh, that we might just follow DHHS guidelines. And so I came to the board uh, at the meeting on the fifteenth and said. Uh, that if we were just going to follow DHHS guidelines. Um, then uh, there really wouldn't necessarily be need for a policy. Uh, because we would just follow the guidelines. Um, and I think it was board member Schneider who said, um, well, maybe not so fast. Don't not have a policy. Come back with uh, like kind of a version of what you might recommend. So we have, you have tonight the current policy. Uh, then you have the DHHS recommendations and Melissa can speak to you. About the guidance from the attorney about, you know, whether that's called a policy or not. And then we have uh, the policy that we would recommend. Um, kind of the way board member Schneider had asked, what would we suggest? And that one uh, is uh, quite influenced by our, our nurses. So Melissa, if, uh, just having set that stage, if you could just walk people through the distinction between the three.
Absolutely, thank you. So the theme tonight seems to be choice and that's what the board has here. So what we've been advised by both DHHS and our legal team. Is the minimum standard is what DHHS has set forth for us. And that could be one of two things. That could be the district saying or the board choosing to. Forgo this policy and make the stance that we are going to follow DHHS guidance and send out messaging to our. Families and staff as things change. So our current policy, which is one of the documents that you have. Is travel outside of New England and internationally must be followed up by a ten-day quarantine. It does not mention anything about test out. It does not mention anything about. Um, you know, fully vaccinated plus fourteen days or if you've had COVID within ninety days. So those are just some of the changes that have come up over the past few updates with DHHS guidance. I know at the last meeting we changed from fourteen to ten, so that was a step moving towards DHHS. But there have been many changes since the policy went into place. So that's our current policy as is. And if we want to have, if the board would like to have a policy to align with DHHS. There is a document that you have that um, matches DHHS. It is very vague. And we have been advised that if we are going to follow DHHS and have it just be that. There may not be a need for a policy. Um, however, if the board would like to have a policy. The one that says match DHHS would be just that. We would link to the most updated guidance. Because as we have learned, DHHS continues to update that same link. So that link has brought us to the right place every time, even though it has changed over the uh, months. And it would link back to that. It does reference um, an adestation form. And notifying your supervisor or your building administrator if you are going to travel needing to quarantine. However, um, that's a process regardless. So even if we did not have it written in a policy, it would still be. A process that we would follow by messaging out to families and staff on our stance on travel. So that's the um, any questions on that match DHHS before I move on to the recommendation? Okay. So the recommendation would be, it's very similar to our current policy. Ten days would be the quarantine for travel outside of New England and internationally. However, we do want to recognize the exceptions that DHHS has had in place for a few weeks. And maybe even months at this point. Those exceptions would include if you're fourteen days post-fully vaccinated status. Within ninety days of a COVID infection. Or adding that test out, or I should say, and adding that test out language of a PCR test. Uh, on day six to seven of their quarantine to test out, but it would have to be that PCR-based test and not a rapid test. But other than that, that uh, policy, that third one is essentially our current policy. With the exceptions to uh, not have to quarantine in certain scenarios.
Andy.
So the, the question I guess I have is, so my intent. Last week, which I thought I said, but maybe I didn't say it right, was that um. The DHHS policy evolves over time, right? It's changed several times. Um, and coming, being a, a, a person that's in the, the business industry. I always like to stay with a single source of truth. And only update something once so that you don't have out of s- out of s- out of uh, cycle or out of edited versions kicking around. So my idea was, is that we would have a policy that would simply say, hey, if you're worried about travel during this pandemic. Go to the DHS site at this link because it's got the information. I mean, whether we call it a policy, an advisory, I don't care, but my whole point. And what surprised me about the third one is, is it calls out certain sections that could change. If the, if the DHS site changes. If we find something new about the vaccine. And you don't need the fourteen days, you only need some lon- smaller number. The PCR test, the rules, I mean, those things could change and I don't want us. Or, or the board that's in place in a month to have to go through this again. So that was the whole reason that I sort of wanted to talk about it this way.
May I speak to that?
Yeah. City's looking down, I'll say, yeah, go ahead.
Yes.
Thank you. So given that. What our legal team has advised, if we truly want to just follow DHHS and link to that every time. It's hard to have a policy in place that says do what they are saying. Because as you mentioned, there are some pieces in, in this, um, you know, even the one that says match DHHS. Um, you know, personal international travel and travel on cruise ships for students and staff is discouraged. That could change next month. And does the board want to revisit this every time DHHS makes one minor edit? Or if they now change, you know, ten-day down to seven-day quarantine? Does the board want to revisit every time there's a change? And Steph, I see you have a, uh, your hand up.
Great Stephanie.
I hate to jump in here, but this is a pretty big point. Currently, the New Hampshire DHHS has no policy. No, they don't make you quarantine for domestic travel at all. Um, they don't recommend that you travel, but there is no policy stating that you have to quarantine. As far as DHHS is concerned in New Hampshire for domestic travel, only international or cruise ship travel. So uh, we also have to remember that this, that isn't built for schools necessarily. Um, of which the vast majority of people all take vacation at the same time and are coming back at the same time. Um, you know, we're, we're talking about. The, all the things that we've been talking about all night long and then we're gonna throw on top, oh sure, come on back from vacation. And just come right back into our population, which is now closer and more people and not fully vaccinated and all of the rest of the stuff, right? So I think that we're moving in a really good direction, but to, to just align with DHHS there. I don't know that, I mean, I'm speaking from strictly a nursing perspective. I don't know that that's the best idea. I think that we need to walk before we run a little bit and um, you know, um, not take too many bites out of the pie quite yet.
Melissa.
I would also like to add that in the current DHHS recommendation. It mentions uh, socially distancing after travel and monitoring for symptoms. And another thing that we've just talked about in five through twelve and we've already discussed, you know, at K to four. That we are lessening that standard from six feet down to three feet or maybe less. So that maintaining social distancing in a classroom setting is not guaranteed at the six-foot. Uh, distance.
And just to follow this theme. Uh, you know, s- uh, I wanna pick up what Stephanie said a minute ago. Um, you know, the policy uh, or the DHHS guidelines aren't really currently, you know, kind of calibrated to the unique nature of a school. But you know, one of the things that um, we've been subject to is, as school people. Um, is a lot of conflicting information from people who hold themselves as experts. So um, the six feet was the golden rule since this whole thing started. And, and now the cha- now it's three feet. So the question that we've been asking is, um, has the virus become less contagious? Um, if six feet used to be good and now it's three, what would be the reason? We often talk about, well, what's the data? Well, I've not been presented with data, for instance, that says why now three feet is suddenly good. So it begs the question, is it just a matter of convenience so that other things can be accomplished? Um, so uh, right now, another word that we haven't talked about is variants. You know, I think if you look at the news right now, you see frequent references to a race between vaccinations and variants. Uh, I think it was one of the nurses, maybe uh, Karen or Steph, I'm not sure. Who uh, provided an article today that uh, or that talked about um. You know, some of the challenges that we're finding with younger people. Um, you know, uh, increasingly finding themselves ill and sometimes a little bit more seriously ill. This is again, not meant to fear monger. This is just to lay it out. And so, you know, just because the DHHS. Says, you know, here's a new guideline. From the perspective of managing a school district with all the complications of that. Um, I would like a little bit more detail from DHHS about why those recommendations have changed. It doesn't strike me that they've changed for health. I mean, I don't see articles that say. I mean, I don't see articles that say COVID is suddenly less contagious. Um, so, uh, anyway, that's, that's our point. Uh, Stephanie, I see your, yeah.
And just to piggyback onto that, we have to remember too, that CDC still has travel guidance in place, right? So, so our CDC guidelines are that you're testing one to three days before you travel, that you're, um, maintaining that six feet distance when you get back, that you're testing again, I think it's three to five days when you get home, um, and quarantining, isolating for seven days. And if you can't test or don't wanna test, then you do the ten days. So that's what the CDC's saying. So there's a big difference between what they're saying and what, uh, you know, how lax, um, New Hampshire DHHS has been. And I think that we need to find that comfort in the middle.
Hey Karen?
I agree with Steph regarding the CDC. The only caveat to that is the very last statement on what they say is that to follow all state and local recommendations or requirements after travel. So they kind of, they say something and then they direct you right back to DHHS. But I also agree that that policy in our population, excuse me, is, I, I don't think that's the best way to keep our kids safe, is to just let everybody come back.
Okay, so, let's go to the one, um, that we've, that is the, um, proposal from administration. Um, let's go to that one and then let's look at that. And let's, um, as a board, discuss, um, agreement or disagreement with that as the foundation. Does that, Andy?
Agree, and I've, actually, I've been sort of reading their proposal on it. So a couple of points that I think we as a board need to be aware of. So when we talked about this, we were working at the last meeting, which was I think, what, fifteenth of March or whatever it was. Um, the, um, the DHHS guidelines were, had not been changed for a few months. They were baited back in January. Since then, the DHHS guidelines have changed. And I'm not sure I'd use the word lax, but one of the things is definitely missing in the new DHHS guidance is they don't differentiate where you travel domestically. And which goes right into the, um, the, the exceptions to the quarantine, um, or at least the, uh, the guidance, the, the policy talks about New England states. That concept doesn't exist in the new DHHS guidance. So if we as a district are gonna say, if you're traveling outside of New England, you've got a quarantine, that is not what the rest of the state is recommending. And that really would be an issue given the, um, given the way that we, um, uh, talked about stu-, you know, visits to colleges and stuff like that. Because based on what I looked at, the new DHHS guidelines don't define essential travel anymore either. So they've lost, some of the, what we sunk our teeth into with this policy originally is now devoid in the DHHS guidelines. So it's not as simple anymore as saying, and, so essentially what we're doing is we're re-crafting a stricter Merrimack School District set of travel guidance based on what I'm seeing in this proposal. Um, especially in the top part, before you get to the highlighted sections, the exceptions. The upfront part, now we would be definitely more restrictive than anything else that I can find that's current right now. So I think that's the first point I'd like to bring when I look at the proposed one. Because they're right, it talks about Canada and cruise ships. And that's all it talks about in terms of travel places that you have to worry about. International and Canada and cruise ships.
Is, is any, anyone opposed to the proposed document? Andy?
So you're saying, are, am I opposed to their proposed document?
Yeah. Or do, or will someone make a motion to accept it?
Well, my, my only comment is, is that I don't believe it's appropriate for us to be more restrictive than DHHS, at least in terms of defining what travel is. I mean, to me, that's where this misses right now. I mean, unless other people are okay with it, I mean, I'm just one vote, right, so.
Melissa?
I would just like to add, I know it's not in the same section or defined like it used to be, but on page six of the updated guidance, it does say what essential travel is. It speaks to it in the sense of to Canada. Um, but it does say, um, essential includes for work, school, personal safety, medical care, care of others, or parental shared custody. Also includes travel for students and their parents or guardians who are visiting institutions of higher learning or preparatory.
They moved it to the bottom of the table at the bottom.
Yeah.
But again, that only classifies if you're traveling to Canada or on a cruise ship or internationally.
Jenna?
Yeah, so my comment was going to be, um, I understand absolutely one hundred percent why we wanna have something that defines some time. Um, you know, the, the definition of that's in here and that you can test out of the ten, you know, ten day quarantine with the option to test out. I, I definitely think that we cannot make a policy that restricts students, you know, to what Andy said, from going to visit colleges. It's, it, I mean, as the parent of a senior, I lived through that last year and it was extremely challenging. You know, thankfully, a lot of places opened up, but even still, some kids are having trouble with that. And it is extremely hard as a, you know, a seventeen year old to try to make a decision about your future without seeing the places that you're going to go. So I would have a really hard time doing something that would, um, restrict that. You know, you know, if you wanna go to Miami and party, that's a whole different thing. But, um, this, I'm, I, I just, that's what, that's the biggest piece I wanna be careful with. I'm okay with being a little bit more on the conservative side considering we're gonna go back to school. And I think, I think it's okay to ask people that they say, you're gonna have to make a concession in order for everybody to be in school. Like your kid's gonna have to stay home if you travel. And that's, you know, it's, it's a give and a take, right? We're putting your kid back in school, you, you might have to keep your kid home, you know, in order to keep the, the now more tight knit community safe. But when it comes to the college tours, I think that has to be considered an exception. And, and it, and it sounds like, Melissa, you're saying it is, it is considered an exception.
It is now, in the very beginning definition of essential, it was not included, but DHHS about a few months ago, when the policy was updated, um, we, we did, they did add that language and we have followed that guideline.
Okay. And it, and it makes sense because colleges have protocols too. They're keeping students safe, um, the best that they can. Um, and certainly for a number of reasons, you know, it makes sense that that's part of the guidelines and I support it as well. Any other questions or do I have a motion? Shannon?
I move we accept the administration's proposed language for travel, uh, in the policy they presented.
And do I have a second? I'll second.
Thank you.
Um, any additional discussion?
Um, honestly, I hadn't weighed in yet. Uh, but I think, you know, Andy made a point earlier that, you know, we have to keep up with, uh, a policy and something that needs to, I don't wanna paraphrase incorrectly, but at this point, you know, I think we're gonna be doing this one or two more times, um, which is fine. Um, I think we may wanna revisit this when schools are back in full session. You know, what does it mean again? Yeah, I think to, um, our nurses' perspective, that we're not able to social distance. We're not able to do those things upon, quote, re-entry. Um, we don't know among our student population who's going to be vaccinated. So although our teachers now may be covered and our staff may be covered, it doesn't mean our students, um, won't be in that position. But, uh, if we have to keep revisiting this to make it work, then we revisit it to make it work. Uh, but we need something that's going to give families a clear understanding of, of what makes sense for travel, what doesn't make sense for travel, um, what's expected of you when you do, and, and how, um, you know, how our schools are going to accept you back in. So I think that, you know, expectations need to be set. We spent the entire night setting expectations. Um, and I think that, you know, when it comes to something of this magnitude, um, that would, you know, create environment which could create, right, then we should, we should be a little, you know, defined on that. And I think that this, this proposal will do that, so.
Andy?
So just to make sure I'm clear, the, the proposed proposal, um, what this means is, is when we get to April break, if a family is traveling to Disney World, they will need to quarantine when they're done, based on like the way this policy's written, because that would not be essential travel and they would be out of New England.
That's correct.
I just wanna make sure that people understand what it is that we're saying here and that there may be some kickback.
If they're, they're at the University of Central Florida on a tour, they would know.
Right, right, right. So, so if they're at Disney World, they do, if they're in Central Florida, they don't. So there's a, based on the policy.
I see Stephanie. Just in, and to remember the piece of unless they're vaccinated, and some kids are for, because they have family members that are immunocompromised or they've had COVID in the last ninety days, that would also, um...
Right, but, but like I, I said earlier when we were talking about this, is remember, we're talking about kids from kindergarten through twelfth grade and, and the only ones that'll be able to be vaccinated in the foreseeable future are sixteen and older starting on Friday. And that only, that accounts for maybe twenty percent of our student population, so that you have eighty percent. So if you have a family that goes, the, the kids in high school that got vaccinated can go right back, but the elementary kids need to, to quarantine. So, I mean, it'll be, it potentially would be easier if, if they're, because of our decisions, if they're a, in the cohort model today, it means they'll be able to do remote all those times and not lose any ground. But it's just gonna be difficult to explain, that's all. I'm just, I'm trying to internalize what this means based on what, now that I'm reading it, so.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Three, the motion fails, two, three, zero. Andy?
I would be more receptive of this if it did not have the New England limitation that matches what the DHHS site has. The rest of it, I'm okay, I understand the reason to have it, but I think that the, the, the travel limitation should match DHHS.
Okay.
That's my, that's, that's my comment. I mean, I, I haven't made a motion yet, but I'm just curious whether anybody has any thoughts.
That was my exact thought. So what you're saying is, it, it, it's just Canada and international?
Canada, international or cruise ships, right.
Are cruise ships even going right now?
Yeah, they, they're starting up again.
Okay.
But I mean, they could, starting next week, so you gotta have something that doesn't.
Okay, yeah. Uh, that was actually my thing. I, I think New England is too restrictive.
Melissa? And then Lori?
So Andy and/or Jenna, is the match DHHS what you are leaning towards? Because my understanding is that policy says what you are asking.
Well, I, I think, um, there, there's two. If you look at the bullets that you've got, I mean, it might be helpful. You want me to share this so I can talk about what it is, Cinda? Cause I got it up on my screen, I can share it.
Yes, please.
Okay, let's see if this works. Share, screen two, tell me if you see this.
Yeah.
So this is the draft, the, the, the one we're talking about here. And at the top, the links, um, um, the link goes to the DHHS site that talks about, uh, um, travel. It talks about outside of New England, of which they no longer differentiate. Uh, non-essential, domestic, I mean, all these bullets at the top. I mean, the not, the, you're right, um, that the essential travel is defined. So that is a valid statement. But I think what we need to take away is the New England piece of these. So you've got a, um, guidance regarding, um, uh, domestic travel. I think that what I would do is, we have to change this to, to remove the New England phrase and say, updated guidance regarding travel outside of New Hampshire or something, maybe we do that. And then down here, you've got on these bottom two, you've got to, um, personal international travel, domestic, uh, um, travel to Canada or travel on a cruise ship unless essential is discouraged. I mean, that's, it still is discouraged. I mean, that is, is still true. But the bottom part is the one where the, um, the quarantine part, I think we need to remove this one or change this to remove the New England state part. That, that's, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, I'm not questioning any of this highlighted part at the bottom because I, I understand the reason for doing that. But it's just the New England part that I think we need to remove.
So that is actually the CDC, the, uh, DHHS current, current practice, I think. That, that's, I think what Melissa was asking. If you remove New England, it becomes what the current polit-, with the current DHHS practice is.
Right, but the que-, the question I have for you is, if I remove the New England part, are there other pieces of this policy that you've put in, in the highlighted section that is different than the DHHS one?
No.
No.
Think that's, no.
Okay. So what am I asking here?
Well, I think, I mean, I, this is, in, in a way, this is where we were, you know, on March fifteenth, uh, which was, you know, I brought this to the board and, and, and said, we could just follow the DHHS guidelines, you know, and, and, and continue to update our practices based on their changing guidance. I mean, and that, that's what, you know, we said on March fifteenth. So...
Right, but, but, but my only question is, is when, when you guys were talking to this, someone, and I, and I apologize, I can't remember who made the statement that the DHHS one was more of recommendation than a guideline, right? So that's, I guess my other question is, I don't, it doesn't bother me if we wanna be more strict on what DHH says and say this is a requirement versus a suggestion. I just didn't necessarily read in the DHHS one that they, that it was a suggestion, right? I mean, I, I, I like what the DHHS one says, but I don't wanna take teeth out of what you and the district wanna have in terms of enforcing it. Um, my only problem was the fact that the New England piece disappeared and I wanna make sure that's category, category.
But there, there really is, so, you know, there really is no, um, enforcement in the DHHS guidelines. I mean, basically...
And is, and is there here in what we're doing?
Yes, because we're saying if you travel outside of New England, you would have, I mean, if you're traveling, you know, that, uh, that second bullet at the top, a personal international travel, travel outside of New England, uh, and travel on cruise ships is discouraged. Uh, uh, wait a minute, uh, I'm sorry, the third bullet. Employees and students who travel internationally, including Canada or domestically outside of the New England states will be required to report their travel and quarantine in accordance with the procedures below. So that's the difference. The DHHS guidelines don't ask for that. So, so basically DHHS is just saying, do your thing. And we could, we could adopt that practice. Um, I think what we were saying is, it doesn't, a, a few weeks ago, it, our lawyer was saying, it doesn't really make sense to make a policy that basically says, we don't think you should do these things. So why would we have a policy that says, we really, we have a policy of really actively discouraging you and we have a policy of saying it's not a good idea, but at the end of the day, we're not gonna tell you to do anything. So, so that's what we meant when we said we could just adopt DHHS and do whatever it tells us to do. Um, and, and our recommendation, which is what we thought the board was asking for, is what would we do over and above DHHS? And what we were, we're saying is, we would do, you know, we would require quarantine. And that would, that's the difference.
And so, so to follow on with that, I don't disagree with you requiring quarantine. My thing is, is saying employees and students who travel internationally, including Canada or on a cruise ship, will be required to report their travel and quarantine with accordance with the procedures below. If all we did was remove the main New Hampshire Vermont part of this, then it would give you teeth, but also make you not be limited to, to the, it would allow you to travel anywhere in the domestic United States.
Agreed.
And that's what I'm saying, is if we did a policy that removed the, the New England state aspects and reflected only international, Canada, or cruise ship, because what, what I want, what I wanna do is allow quarantine if it's appropriate, but also not require quarantine if somebody travels domestically for require, you know, domestically.
So it, it might just be that it's late in the night, but I, I, I really don't understand that. The DHHS guidelines currently, if you look at that, the third bullet says students and students... If you look at that, the third bullet says students and staff who travel internationally, including Canada or on a cruise ship. Uh, will be required to report their travel in quarantine. So the DHHS guidelines don't say anything about New England or domestically. They let you do it.
Right.
So, so, so that's, that's it. So if you wanna remove from our policy. New England and domestically, what you're functionally doing is making it be what DHHS says. So then the question is, just tell us that that's what you wanna have us do and we'll do it. Anything short of that, you know, I mean, it's, it's the DHHS. They've thrown, they've, they've basically thrown open the doors to travel domestically. And our recommended, recommended policy. Says we as Merrimack School District don't really wanna do that. Um, we would like to continue to say that we have the right to quarantine. People who travel domestically. And the reason that we say that is because we've just decided to bring people back to school. And we are concerned that if we do that, you know, so DHHS says, you know, make school more accessible to people. But then they've limited the, uh, ability that we have to keep it safe from COVID. Which has the managerial impact of making it more likely that we have to shut down school.
So. So, so I guess the fundamental question of the board is. Do you believe that the policy that the Merrimack School District has restricts travel? Um, meaning you only, you don't have to quarantine. Um, only if you are, travel within New England. I mean, you, you understand the difference is that. It's either New England or the whole country. I mean, do, do people share Mark's concern about opening? Without quarantine on the board?
Lori.
So I guess my concern is, um, because I had the situation, you know, I, um. You know, I have a house in Western New York and there's no cases of COVID, but because of the. Uh, quarantine requirements, I can't go to that place. And in Allegheny County, New York. There is no COVID, but if I leave New England, then I have to quarantine. So I think. That's where I find the restrictions are very difficult because, you know, I, you know, I think there's probably some red zone areas in the country. That we might not want people to go to, but, um, safe places, that now we're making it really restrictive for people.
Jenna and then Melissa.
Um, so my thought on this is that, you know. Because there's been a pandemic for a year, right? And, and, um, older people have, have been predominantly quarantining. I'm, I'm thinking of the fact that people are going to travel over April vacation to Pennsylvania to see grandma. That they haven't seen in a year. Do you know what I mean? For the first time, they're gonna be able to go and visit their grandparents and. They're not going to spring break in Miami or to Disney World. They're going to finally visit to North Carolina or to South Carolina. And I mean, teachers actually in district have personally called me and said, please, please don't make it that we can't go anywhere. You know, i- if I'm not fully vaccinated, I don't, I mean, I don't wanna have to call in and quarantine, but I wanna go see my mother who I haven't seen in a year. And, um. I mean, I, I'd like to think we can trust people to use their judgment. I, I know that that's not always the case. I mean, I know that. But if we say you can't leave New England, then finally, these people can go visit. Their, their family members and we're telling them that it will mean they have to quarantine. That is my only reason for. I, I, like, like I said, I, I'm okay with having an, a quarantine requirement. I don't know how you word it, but certainly international cruise ships, all of that, but. You know, uh, I don't wanna try to try to, you know, you know, eleven fifteen at night, use my brainpower, try to then. Draft a new way of saying it, but that's my biggest concern, that people won't be able to go visit vaccinated loved ones they haven't had a chance to see in a year.
So I, I, so I, uh, I just wanna say, and I know Melissa has a point. So, you know, we're certainly not indifferent to that. Um, you know, I mean, I am subject to the same. You know, I haven't seen people, you know, I mean, I live like a hermit because I have a responsibility to do my job. And I really trying to, you know, so I mean, I go to my house and to Merrimack. That's my life. Um, but that's, that's the thing, you know, everything's a choice. So I guess what I'm wanting to say is, once again, we'll do whatever the board wants. But the idea of letting people go see grandma in Pennsylvania, I'm not indifferent to that. I, I totally get it. But as a manager running a school district. You know, I, I have to try to think about what's the way that we can keep school operating. That's one of our goals. That's one of the premier goals. And so I can't make my decisions based on, you know, the convenience of families to see people. I know that that's the compulsion to do. And I'm not indifferent to that. But as a manager, I've got one job and that's to keep schools open. And I'm trying to limit, um, the ways that that can get interfered with. And I wouldn't possibly know, nor could I possibly track the safe zones and the hot zones. Throughout the United States. Um, and that, having lots of experience with trying to make exceptions to policies. I can guarantee you that we'll spend from now to eternity, listening to people who are gonna prove that like, well, my place was safe. And then that place wasn't. So what's the basis upon which you're making a decision? And so that's why I don't think it's feasible as a policy matter. To pick and choose those things. It's either we say. We're going with DHHS, which is a much more liberal policy and accept it, that's fine. And then everybody understands what that means. That's all this tonight has been. Is just to try to get people to understand what these things mean. What that means is a great likelihood of increased infection. That we will have to deal with as managers of the school district. Um.
Oh.
So, and then, or, you know, or the policy that we have, which kind of like you can't have your cake and eat it too. We've said it so many times. The policy that we recommend. Does prevent those very needed family gatherings outside of New England, for sure. But the benefit is that we decrease the likelihood of. That impacting our ability to keep the wheels on the bus educational. So we'll do anything, but the, we've been trying all night to say. This is what you need to consider when you consider these things.
So all, all that policy says is not a requirement, right? You're saying discouraged. It's a guidance. Am I reading that wrong? Or is there a defined, is there a defined quarantine that has to happen?
In our policy, uh, Melissa, go ahead, go ahead.
So in the recommended, if you look at the third bullet of employees and the. Second bullet of students is where it says, um. An employee returning from international travel, travel via cruise ship or domestic travel outside of New England must quarantine for a period of ten days. So it does use language about discouraged, but it clarifies who needs to quarantine.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. I'm sorry, I'm getting tired. Um, the one, the one thing maybe that I would offer then. For consideration is. If that quarantine were perhaps four or five days. Knowing that contact tracing has a three-day look back. You know, is, is there an alternative that might still provide a layer of safety? Um, but not be as extreme as ten days.
Well, it's already, it's already listed here. See, the students required to quarantine due to travel of the option of shortening their travel by getting a COVID. On days six and seven of their quarantine. There's always, already something in there that allows that to happen, I think.
Well, I was thinking even a, a, a shorter period of time, just based on the time of contact tracing. But that's just, I just offer that. I'm not a medical professional. I just.
So I will, again, and, oh, Melissa, go ahead, please, Melissa.
I'll defer to Patty on it, but I think she's gonna say what I'm thinking. So Patty, go right ahead.
Just so you know, I can't see everybody's. If you wait, raise your hand. I just have a few on the, so feel free to speak up if you have your hands up and I don't see you.
Sure. The current, um, the current guidelines say that if you're a close contact, which you're potent, you potentially are. If you go and travel and you don't know that you've been exposed to someone, right? Um, is that you test five to seven days after exposure. So I think that that's why that guideline of testing on six to seven days is that's when the highest viral load is, is between five to seven days. So if you've been infected during that time period, that's why they recommend you test them because you're more likely to show positive if you are indeed positive.
And can I just add something to that?
Yeah.
It hasn't changed that symptoms can show up between two to fourteen days after exposure as well. So there's still that. Level of, um, kind of exposure on top of that as well.
So this is, this is the part that I wanted to speak to, and I think the nurses are obviously way better equipped to do it than, uh. Than I am, but, um, you know, what we're getting into now is back to what I was saying a few minutes ago about. You know, what's the truth here? You know, is six feet, the six feet was the gold standard some time ago. Uh, now it's suddenly not, but nothing about the virus has really changed. Um, and so suddenly three feet. So, you know, it had been fourteen days. Um, and then that got changed to ten days. And now we're saying, well, you know, maybe it could be seven or five days. I mean. The, the, the challenge here is that, um, I think partly why we've tried to stay consistent. Even in the face of changing guidelines from DHHS and CDC is because, you know, nobody has presented compelling evidence. That there's a reason to change other than so that we can make things more convenient for people. I mean, that's really the biggest difference that I can see. Uh, because nobody has presented me with data that says suddenly now, we've got lots of data that says it always should have been three feet. It's just suddenly one day it's three feet. But now three feet makes it more possible to come back to school. And so is that the goal? And if that was the goal, then, you know, then you could have told us that, you know, a, a year ago. Um, so that's, I think, and we have seen, and again, I think our nurses can speak better to it than, than I can, but. We have seen, I am aware of several cases where someone on the fourteenth day has demonstrate of quarantine. Has demonstrated symptoms. They've come out of the blue on the fourteenth day. Um, and so, but, you know, we're not advocating making it twenty-one days. But what we are saying is that, you know, there are cases where, uh, if we were to cut it too short. We could theoretically be bringing people back that are going to then demonstrate. Um, and, you know, symptoms that will then require us to take action. And so the common theme here is what is the likelihood that, uh, that we. What are the things we need to do to increase the chances of us to keep school operational? The end of the day, that's it. I would love to think that we, that I could. You know, introduce those other concerns about people being vaccinated and, and, and wanting to see grandma. Because I deeply understand the, the, the power of that. But that's, that's helping, helping people connect with grandma. And I'm not trying to sound disrespectful to that because I desperately wanna see my family too. But, but that's not our job. In my opinion. But again, if the board chooses to have us follow DHHS guidelines, absolutely fine. And we will do it. And we will do what we have always done. It's just, you know, deal with the consequence of that. But that's what the consequence is.
Can I make a point on that?
Yep.
And I'm not trying to go more towards our recommendation, but there's of course reasons why we put that into place. And I'd just like to call out the numbers from, um, January to March and just the numbers we provided tonight. This is not even including K to four students. And I know families have good intentions when, or staff, when going to see family outside of New England. Um, however, after the December break, in the month of January, there were sixty-five positive cases. And in the month of March, only twenty-seven. So that number from January was from a lot of holiday gatherings. And I just think that's important to note.
Jenna. You're on mute.
But we didn't see that uptick after February break, then is what you're saying. It really, you know what I'm saying?
That is true. Yep.
I, I guess the hard thing is, and I, I, I'm going back to what my husband always tells me, you know, I, 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 I do this to myself, right? I, I, I get a decision and I start going on and on and I try to think of all the possible catastrophic things can happen. And he always says, stop. You are not an epidemiologist. You cannot, you cannot think. You're not an epidemiologist. You can't talk about how these, the epidemiologists, they set, they set the policies, just follow the policies. They do, that's not your job. And so like, I wanna make it stricter, cause I want, cause in my mind, that makes sense. But at the same time, I think we're gonna be revisiting this thing every other day because I think over the next few weeks. You know, and we, I mean, we're talking in circles here at this point. And. I, I don't know, I'm, I'm coming, I really now, I'm thinking we really should just. Look, you know, I, I assume that the epidemiologists are saying it, it's okay. I mean, I don't know. It's hard. This is hard because. You know. We aren't epidemiologists and we're supposed to depend on the people at New Hampshire DHHS. And we're supposed to be able to point to their policy and say, that's what we should do. You know, and. I, I agree with Andy. I think New England is too limiting. And, and if, if at that point, you know, we're gonna sit here and redraft another whole policy. I'm wondering if we should just stick with New Hampshire DHHS.
Just so you know, we're perfectly fine with that. I mean, well, perfectly fine. That's not our recommendation. So I couldn't, I guess. I guess I wouldn't say we're perfectly fine with that. But I mean, that's not an unreasonable position. Um, and we're, you know, we're, we're fine with that. And if we just need to be clear what potential consequence of that would be, and then I would hope that we would be united in the response to that. Inevitability, um, uh, uh, or not inevitability, but. You know, that possibility. But it's not our recommendation, but if that's what the board wills, we'll, we'll do it.
Stephanie has her hand up. She, oh, I can see everything, Cindy, cause I'm sharing my screen, so I'll tell you.
I was just about to just start talking anyway, but, um. Just to the point that you just made, Jenna, where you said that we didn't have that uptick after February vacation, right? We quarantined. So that's an important point to make, that we were following guidelines that were having us quarantine staff and students for travel over February vacation. So we didn't see that, um, uptick in positive numbers. We did have quarantine numbers because people chose to travel and then quarantine, which was perfectly fine. Um, and they had the option to still learn from home and that was okay. And that was the choice that they made, but we did quarantine. After February, and that's why we didn't see those upticks in cases. Right, but at Christmas, you were remote anyway. So the kids were quarantined anyway. So you still saw the uptake. So there was travel both times. And both times people traveled, they were quarantined. And there was an uptick after Christmas, but not after February, right? Am I missing something? Karen says I'm missing something.
Sorry, if you look at the quarantines in January, it was a hundred and fourteen. If you look at the quarantines in, in March, which was after February break. We had two hundred and sixteen quarantines. So we had a lot more kids in quarantine in March. So just to, just to make a point.
Yeah. Eddie. Oh, you're on mute.
So, so maybe the balance here, right, is that, that you don't, you don't take away the quarantine. Um, or tell pe- people, and maybe this is going against the grain. Um, but you allow people to travel because I'll tell you the reality of it is that people are gonna travel. And the challenge that we have faced right now is that there are a lot of families that don't tell us they're traveling. Or we find out through the back door that they've traveled, because they don't want to have to go through some of the restrictions that we put in place, right? That's the reality of it. So if you, if you make a compromise, which which I think the the policy says, and you don't restrict it necessarily to. Um, travel outside of New England, but you allow them, you tell them that they do have to quarantine, but they have that test out option. I have to think that if they have an option that works for them, and they think. I don't have to quarantine for ten days, I can quarantine for six and test out, well, then I'm willing to do that and let you know that I'm traveling, right? Because it gives them a little bit more flexibility. I'm not saying that's what's going to happen, but that would be my hope that that's what's going to happen. And so it sort of strikes a balance.
Yeah, I like that idea.
So.
Excuse me, Melissa.
I'm sorry, and I think we've said this a few times, it's getting late, maybe there's something I'm missing, but that language is already in the recommendation. So I'm not sure why, what's different.
Lori.
So Cindy, is it all right if we just table this for, because I think people still need time? I don't know, we've spent a lot of time on it, it doesn't feel like anyone's really landed, can we just ta-table this for our next meeting?
I'm fine with that, any objections? Andy.
No, I mean, there was some question for people who are going to travel at Easter, but I think. Because we don't have consensus to make any change, so we just got to stick with what's there, and but we do need to close on it, I think. At Monday's meeting, because we got to have this well in advance for for vacation stuff, so.
Okay.
So I think we all need to do our homework and come in with a mindset, so we can close on this.
Yeah, I I'd like to do some research, more research, I know there's a couple of schools that have fourteen day quarantine still. Um, you know, the challenge is, the timing again of it is timed with. Um, you know, an increased number of students in the schools, and so I think tabling it makes the most sense. Okay, uh, moving on to the next item, which is the public comments.
Hi, uh, so we do have one that came in one, uh, since our meeting started, give me a moment. And since it was. It came in uh, earlier tonight, so uh, to whom it may concern, my name is Michelle Prue of Seventeen Kimberly Drive Unit thirteen, Merrimack, New Hampshire. First and foremost, I think the children should be given a voice in this, and they were not. My child and I both feel that this going back to school full time is not safe, and it's not fair to them at all. There's no way that this pandemic is over and most children are not allowed to get their COVID shots, why not wait until everyone is vaccinated? My daughter and I really feel that changing this again would, changing this again now would be mu- so much more confusing. She's just finally gotten used to this and doesn't want to have to go through another big change again, so close to the end of the year. I talked to a lot of staff at Merrimack High School and a lot of the children, and everyone I've spoken to does not feel comfortable with going back to school full time. I hope that you respect that and do not force these children to do something they are not comfortable with. And something that can potentially be dangerous to their health and to the parents' health that they come home to. I personally have two comorbidities, one being asthma, and I'd rather not get COVID. Um, I've been thinking, I've been nothing but super careful. I don't even grocery shop anymore, I think taking away my safety as well as the safety of all of our children. By forcing my child to go back to school full time is extremely dangerous. I would hate to get COVID because my daughter was forced to go back to school, at least wait until everyone's vaccinated, I can't say this enough, thank you, Michelle Prue.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I wanted to say one thing real quick, uh, before we start to um, close. And it's just regarding the presentation that was given earlier. I had uh, just sent an email and I asked Mark and um, Nancy and Matt if you could, as soon as possible, just get that presentation up on the website. Um, so that the public can reference it, um, since they, they weren't able to follow along um, with it. Or they may need it for their reference.
Cindy, but point of order, we didn't actually do what they, what the PowerPoint said necessarily for dates, so. I think what would be appropriate is to edit it so it follows what we actually voted on, so they don't send their kids back to school May third.
Yeah, and revise, then that makes sense, edit it and then revise as of this date, and then put that up there, thank you, good call.
Yes, I'll take care of it, I'll I'll take care of it in the morning, I've already talked to uh, I've already talked to Cindy, I'll give it to Matt to come up on Facebook two in the morning.
Okay, that's perfect, thank you. And then, um, we did have a non-public scheduled for tonight, we're going to need to push that out. Um, and so, um, with that, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Made by Shannon, second by Jenna, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose, none, we all agreed, five zero zero, thank you and good night.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel to gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Uh, good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett, I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected, follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.